Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 18th City Council meeting. And at this time, I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of April 18th, 2018. And Chief, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go on to item three, roll call. Director Maloney?
Fariah.
Here.
Johnson Santos.
Yes.
Louis.
Silveira.
Present.
Valalta.
Here. We do have a quorum. Item number four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Ms. Fariah?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Ms. Louis?
Second.
Motion by Fariah, second by Louis, to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Would you please, at this time, when you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rick Rasciano. I'm from Los Banas. I'm the chairman of the American Legion Post Boys State Program, 32nd Rundown. The program is a program run by, in Sacramento, where all the American Legion posts in the state send high school juniors to Sacramento for a learning about government, okay? They teach them the duties, rights, responsibilities, and privileges of being franchise citizens. They stay in the dorms at Sac State. Each floor is a city. Each dorm is a county, and the dorms together are the state. They run for city council on their city floor. They run for law enforcement. They run for county supervisors in the dorm, and then they run for governor and lieutenant governor and all that amongst the entire group. The two governors and lieutenant governor get to go back to Washington, D.C., and they participate in a program called Boys Nation, where they do it on a national level with all 50 states. But we pick a candidate from each Pacheco High School and Los Banas High School, and one alternate in case one of the first two can't make it. The teachers and the counselors at these schools do an outstanding job of getting us great candidates every year. Mike Hughes is the commander of the VFW, and Alan Cotta is the commander of the American Legion. The three of us do the interviews. This year, we had four applicants at one, four at another. We try to keep it to four to five, and they keep giving us, you know, the best of the best, and it's just amazing. So I'd like to introduce this year's candidates. We have Parker Smith is the candidate from Los Banas High School. Eric Manzeneras is the candidate from Pacheco High School. And our alternate this year is Adrian Marquez, and he will be on call in case one of the other two guys can't make it. But outstanding candidates, every year they get better, and we're fortunate enough in doing these interviews, we get to see the best of what our schools have to offer, and it's really a pleasure to do it. We're confident that they will represent our post well, our schools well, and our city well. So that's our Boys State candidates for this year for y'all.
Well, thank you, American Legion and VFW, for continuing with this program. Fine representation. The selection process is second to none, and thank you, guys, for representing Los Banas. Okay. Is there anyone else?
Yes. Good evening, city-
Oh, wait a minute. Let me reset here.
Reset the timer.
Okay, go ahead.
Go. Okay. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Valta, and residents of Los Banas. My name is Jennifer Halpin. I'm from Merced. I'm with the Merced County Regional Waste Management Authority. So we own and operate the two landfills here in the county, and we also offer household hazardous waste collection events, which is why I'm here tonight. So reminder, you guys are having your spring cleanup event this Saturday. It's from 7:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., where you can get rid of your debris, your green waste, and other materials for free. What we do through grant money for, on behalf of the city of Los Banas, is we dispatch out a trailer there for the collection of tires. Residents can bring up to nine tires at no cost, get them placed onto that trailer, and then we have a recycler that comes and picks up that trailer, and then recycles those tires into recycled products. That is a $2,500 trailer that is covered by the grant cost or grant fund, so the city, it's at no cost to the city. Another thing that we work with the city of Los Banas to do is to also have dispatched out two 53-foot-long trailers for mattresses. And so every cleanup, the residents usually fill those up pretty well, so they can, that's a total of about 300 mattresses that, again, the city's not paying for to dispose of, but we can take them from the residents at no cost, and it's funded through a state program. So that's about $1,500 also that you're saving in city funds. So what I'm also here to talk about, though, is the Household Hazardous Waste Event. So this is going to be in partnership with the Los Banas Cleanup. The cleanup side of it is going to be for residents only of Los Banas for the trash, debris, tires, and whatnot collection service or drop-off service. The part for the household hazardous waste is actually open to all residents of Merced County, so residents from San Anella, Gastine, Dos Palos can also come to this event. It's at no cost, and that's when you can bring in your old paints, aerosols, old barbecue propane tanks, pesticides, old pool chemicals, things like that. That's going to be at no cost where you can get rid of that out of your household. So I left some flyers out in the back, so you guys can see. On the back is an example of what can be, is possibly located in your house and in what area, like from in your garage or your kitchen, like the fluorescent tubes, things like that. And again, that's at no cost. It's going to be from 7:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. in partnership with the cleanup, and I will be out there. I'm actually going to walk the lines. I know it gets backed up quite a bit to make sure that if there's anyone in line that has only hazardous waste, what I'm going to do is pull them out of that line and then take them to the front where we can then get them over to the household hazardous waste side of it. So are there any questions?
Council members, is there any questions?
Thank you so much.
Ms. Fariah, do you have a question?
No, my light lit up.
Oh, it did. Okay. Well, that's a new one. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, so much. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, community residents. I'm Sandy Lemus. I live in Los Banas. I am currently the president of Habitat for Humanity, and I'm going to be talking on number nine for the waiver of the fees. I wanted to make some clarification on the staff report and different things. Our agency, we are truly a nonprofit. We have a three-quarter staff member that's paid that has so many duties that she has to do. We literally build by faith and funds that we make. We do not have access to a lot of the funds other nonprofit home builders do. They qualify for the CBD, FDR grants or whatever, ABC grants. And so we actually, we actually raise all the money to build the houses. We've only actually built five homes to date because Habitat believes we do not want to acquire debt. We do not get loans. We, when the people buy the homes, there's zero interest loans. So we would defeat our purpose if we go after any money that we have to pay back. We're extremely frugal. We were blessed to do 11 Neighborhood Stabilization Program grants. A lot of people are under the assumption that that money is coming back to Habitat. None of that money comes back to Habitat. It goes to the city, which in turn goes to the state or wherever it has to go. So we do get funding for five homes, one of which has been paid off. The loans are around $600. Of that, $200 goes into an inbound account for taxes and insurance. There was a clarification on the lots on M Street. The lots and the houses were not donated to us. We got them at a reduced rate, but we still paid a very significant amount. We are not developers. We are not building $300, $400,000 homes. We are trying to provide an opportunity for low-income people to buy homes in this community, and we're at the point, again, that that is almost impossible. We spent a lot of time having to pay to rezone and get everything situated, and one of the biggest issues is the 1209 Sixth Street building has been sold, as you know, the Evangelical Free Church, wonderful organization. They did everything they could to keep us there, but there's just way too many upgrades and improvements that have to be done. So we had to, we weren't notified until November 30th that we had to close the store. That was our primary fundraiser. It was all staffed by volunteers, and all that money was put directly back in the community. We closed January 31st, so that actually left us with five months no income for the rest of our fiscal year. We do, we believe in building community. We have, if people qualify for Habitat Home, we do want them to do 500 sweat equity hours. It's not a handout. It's a hand up. I would have loved to have had a zero-interest loan on my home, as I'm sure most of you would, but we want people that cannot afford to get homes. These are two single moms that have kids, and they are just wonderful people. This is not a new area. It's an infill. It's not a new development. Everything that needs to be there is there already. We also do a lot of critical home repairs and brush with kindness, so I think we're not your normal nonprofit agency. We are here because we love the community, and we want to make this the best place that we can live, and this is for all our residents. So I would ask you to reconsider. I know the recommendation is not to approve. I would ask you to reconsider to approve, maybe a one-time approval to do that. We would really appreciate it. The school has already waived their fees because these are families that are already here. They have to be longtime Los Banas residents in order to qualify. We really appreciate all the city's support that we have gotten. We love our community, and we really wish you would reconsider voting yes on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rhonda Lowe, resident of Los Banas. Tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Salvation Army Community Center, we're going to be having our first planning meeting for the Love Los Banas. And at that meeting, we are inviting anybody that really cares about our community and wants to get involved at any level of showing our pride in our community. It could be an organization. It could be a church. It could be a club. It could be an individual. And tomorrow night, we'll pick at least one project that the group decides on that we will do this coming year and possibly even more. But we really want to get back to kind of raising the awareness of how important it is for us to have a sense of pride in our community and to bring it to the forefront. So that's tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Community Center of the Salvation Army, 1205 Fourth Street? I got the 12 right. 1235 Fourth Street, and it's the two-story building. No? Wrong? Okay, sorry. In the back of the Salvation Army there. So we invite everybody to come on that, and then we'll come back in the future with whatever we decide tomorrow night. The other thing, on the second Tuesday of every month, I'm a business coach for Small Business Development Center, and on the second Tuesday of each month at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, I do a workshop for people that are thinking about going into business. And what we do at that workshop is kind of help them decide if it's a viable option for them and kind of the steps that it takes to get up and running. And all of this is provided at no charge to them, and, as you know, the importance of entrepreneurship to a community is huge. We'll always have big box stores and that sort of thing, but when we have entrepreneurs that have invested in their community, it makes a big difference in our town. And so we want to encourage people that have a dream to make that happen. And so that's the second Tuesday of each month at the Community Center at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda, I would hope that, we just had a recent meeting of the downtown merchants, and in the meetings you're going to have, maybe you could reach out to some of the people that were there to kind of coordinate and bring both groups together.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening. I'm John Fulton, Los Banas resident. Council members, Mr. Mayor. I looked at the agenda tonight, and I said, there must be a typo. You said you're going to deny the Habitat for Humanity request for their waiver. I've heard voices, strong voices is the term I've been hearing, strong voices from this council about doing things for the community, but I'm getting the impression that your strong voices are the wrong people. So my son has donated hours to Habitat for Humanity. I think they're doing a wonderful job. I hope that you'll reconsider who your constituents are. As I travel around the city of Los Banas, I see city workers and county workers doing landscaping, making the city look pretty. There have been motions by the council to make the city look pretty, to make it look better, looking at signs and signage. Temporary signs, whether they're professionally made or not, can be a blight on the community. On the northeast corner, Badger Flat, Highway 152, southwest corner of Wilmont and Ranchwood or Seventh, we have temporary signs, very nice, pretty temporary signs, professionally made. But who is doing the maintaining? Who put the permission? Who approved those signs to be put there on Highway 152 right-of-way, on county right-of-way, and city right-aways? So we have city personnel maintaining around political signs. They're conflict of interest. We have lots of people in government right now, at all levels of government, in Washington, D.C. especially, with strong voices for the wrong people. I'd like you to be a strong voice for the people that don't have a voice, like Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, and audience. My name is Mark Bodley. I live here in Los Banas, and I am your appointed representative to the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District. Last month, I provided you with a written report of the district's activities for 2017, and that report just gives you a brief summary of the mosquito district's operations for the year. Our main office is in Merced with a satellite office here on Deepwell Road, where we have a office, a lab, and airport where we have our hangar. We have four aircraft, two twin-engine aircraft and two single-engine aircraft, which we use to spray all the numerous areas of the county that have potential breeding sites, namely, we have duck clubs, wetlands, pastures, and so forth. We use the aircraft to spray directly over those areas. We also can spray over cities if needed. So far, last year, there was no need. Even though there was such a wet year, we did not have the prevalence of mosquitoes that we anticipated. Our mission is to prevent diseases caused by mosquitoes and those that are just pestiferous. We did have a recent aerial survey of Merced County, mainly the major cities, that you may have seen in the local press. There were 1,679 swimming pools that have been neglected that have green algae or other types of infections in the water that will breed mosquitoes. So we will be taking some serious steps to notify those residents, to try to clean up their swimming pools, and that will be an ongoing project for this summer. I don't know if you have any questions. I'm available at any time, or you can call the district. Mosquito season is upon us now, and I must say that the northern part of Los Banas is more susceptible to mosquitoes than the southern part because there's numerous duck clubs, especially starting in August, September, October. There are numerous duck clubs that, of course, flood their areas, and then the prevailing wind will bring those mosquitoes into the northern part of Los Banas. So that is another area that we're heavily concentrated on with the aircraft spraying those areas. If you have any questions, you can call me, 826-3687, or our district office. If you have any mosquito infestation, you'd like to have somebody come out and spray or take methods to prevent those mosquitoes, you can call, we have a district mosquito baitment district number is 800-622-3242. abatement district number is 800-622-3242. I don't know if you have any questions for me. If not, you can call me at home. Okay?
Mark, if someone spots it, you know, we had this problem in the past when we had a lot of vacant houses, and luckily, some of that is going away. But a lot of it's gone away, but if the neighbor spots a, over the fence, a pool that has algae and it just looks like a mosquito pit, that's the reason to call mosquito abatement?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely, definitely.
All right.
And we will take, try to take action. Normally, we'll notify the resident that we can help. There's certain things we can do. There's a briquet that we can put in the pools, but the main thing is to get, of course, the filter going and the chemicals in it. Anyone else?
Anyone else have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Mark, what time do you guys typically, is there a better time of the day or night that you guys would normally be out with the fixed-wing aircraft?
Morning and, early morning and late in the evening.
So typically not in...
Yeah, it's not during the day.
Perfect.
No. Because that's, the mosquitoes are active, you know, early morning and late evening.
And you said that it's the start of mosquito season. Actually, today is the first day I got bit by a couple.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Spray him now?
Well, we're back in full force. As of April 1st. Okay, thank you very much.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to consideration approval consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have...
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Numbers 209933 through 210187 in the amount of $1,910,386.93. Minutes for the April 4th, 2018 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5949 concerning the industrial disability retirement of Police Officer Preston Jellin. City Council Resolution Number 5950, accepting the City Hall addition as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder for the construction of City Hall addition with Arts Construction Company, Inc. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Ms. Silveira, your mic is on, is it just on?
It's just on.
Okay. Mrs. Santos? Okay? All right. Thing has a mind of its own, keeps doing things. Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Lewis, second by Mrs. Santos, to approve the consent agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, Los Banos Community, item number seven, Los Banos Community Service Network Grant. And I just want to go right to the gusto here, we're going to introduce Jeff Kettering, and he is the chief of Merced County Probation Department, and he's going to give us a presentation tonight. Hi, Jeff.
How are you?
Good.
And I'm going to kind of be the opening act, and the individuals who are doing the real work are going to be here following me.
Oh, okay.
Um, all right. As the mayor said, my name is Jeff Kettering, I'm the chief probation officer for the county of Merced, and thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to share some, what I believe is incredibly positive news to this council. If you remember, I was here, I think it was about four or five months ago, and I spoke about our department's interest in applying for a grant through the state of California. My memory's not the greatest, so I'm just going to assume that everybody else is in my boat, and I'm going to kind of give you a little bit of rundown of the timeline of what we were looking at. Going back to November 2014, Proposition 47 was passed by the voters of the state of California. Probably not a good idea to have a discussion on the positives or negatives of Prop 47 at this time, but it was passed by the voters in the state of California. The state of California believed there was going to be considerable amount of savings because many of the individuals who would have gone to prison were not going to go to prison because offenses are reduced to misdemeanors, and that allowed the state to offer competitive grants across the state to a variety of government agencies and community-based organizations. We made the decision as a probation department last year to apply for this grant. There were a handful of probation departments that applied for them. We, luckily enough, were the only probation department in the state of California to receive an award of this grant. We made a decision in the process after doing focus groups, that Los Banos was in the greatest need of the county for this type of a program. I know I'm saying something that is probably going to sound very obvious to all of you, is there's a lack of services in this side of Merced County. We saw that in our focus groups, we saw that there was a need. I see our numbers of probation in Los Banos, and I see a lack of services, and it's something that I wanted to try and remedy. And we were awarded the grant sometime around March, March or April of last year, and part of the grant allows us to serve youth 16 to 21 years of age. The requirements are, they have to be criminally involved. That is a word that the state, the Board of State Community Corrections has used. They have to be criminally involved and have a recognized substance abuse issue. Those are the populations that we're dealing with. On July 11th, we went out to RFP to solicit proposals from organizations. We made the decision as part of our grant to give 88% of the money to community-based organizations. The grant required 50%, I thought it was important to make it as high as possible because I wanted to bring community-based organizations, not only just to Los Banos, but increase community-based organizations' involvement in Merced County. Because I think that's something that I've seen in my 28 years in the probation department is lacking throughout this county. So we made that decision. So, to go back, July 11, 2017, we went out to RFP for vendors. Good, bad, or indifferent, we only received one proposal, and it went out. That proposal went to our evaluation committee, and they were approved. And on January 28th, the Board of Supervisors from Merced County approved the contract with SWAG, Students With Aspiring Goals, to be our service provider to our Los Banos Community Hub. I could go into the details of the program. I could tell you what a great program I believe it's going to be, but I'd sell it short. I've had a relationship with SWAG since their onset. I've been following their progress as a community organization in Merced. They have a great heart for youth. Most of their focus since their onset has been on athletics. I have no problem saying that I did not take part in the evaluation of this proposal because my son has played sports with SWAG for the past three years. So until our Board of Supervisors approved this contract, I had no involvement in this proposal. That's how much I believe in this organization. I was glad that they were approved through my agency. And my son, just as of last weekend, was playing on a seven-on-seven football team with SWAG on his jersey. So Devon Hilliard, the founder, and I could, he has many roles within the organization, is going to come and tell you about the program. I'm not going anywhere. So if afterwards you have any questions, myself, Devon, Jermaine Pastor are here from SWAG. We have a couple other individuals from other organizations that are working in the community hub, and with this, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hilliard.
Thanks, Chief, for the kind words. Good evening, Los Banos community, Mayor and City Council. My name is Devon Hilliard, like Chief Kettering said. Students with aspiring goals, acronym SWAG. Our goal is to help youth. We've been in Los Banos since 2014 in a different capacity, you know, helping the youth out here as far as just, you know, on a sportsman, you know, sportsmanship level. We collaborated with two other organizations, you know, to get the grant, you know, through the Merced County probation, and which has been very, very enlightening for us. We have just opened a center right across the street from the Los Banos Community Center, which is a couple doors down from Wool Growers. It used to be the old thrift shop, which we opened our hub right there. In our hub right now, the first room is a game room for the youth to take activities in. The second room is a workout facility, which has artificial grass in there, and the third room in the back is the office space that we, you know, conduct our office business in there and let, you know, clinicians, privacy plays for the youth to, you know, talk to somebody back there. The hub is weaving three programs together to give youth on probation life skills and tools that will help them get their lives back on track and transition back into the community. Our goal is to support and guide them as they grow into healthy, productive, and law-abiding adults. So the services include Mr. Robert Castro, he's El Hova Noble, he's not here tonight, he's in South Dakota doing another project, but he has this evidence-based youth character development program that teaches young men the core value and benefits living lives of integrity and honoring their word. In weekly sessions using a well-designed, extensively-tested curriculum, boys learn about their own value and positive roles that could play within their families and in the community. And then we have Simple Equation, which is Ms. Kelly Turner, who's here. It's a well-established and widely-admired Merced program that uses a widely-structured curriculum with community service at its core. Simple Equation provides leadership training by actively engaging youth in the affairs of their community. It teaches them how to develop their ideas on issues they care about and to speak respectfully to decision-makers. Simple Equation's leadership training greatly enhances the teaching value and benefits of required community service. And then we have SWAG, which is the day-to-day operator you'll see is Jermaine Pastor, he's our mentoring coordinator, he's the one that's there at the hub, you know, two days a week, you know, sometimes even more mentoring the youth, you know, taking them to the Los Banos Community Center, which has been a great resource for us also. We just opened our doors to the youth and young men who are being referred to us by, you know, Chief Kettering's staff. We had initially a family orientation in mid-February, and that has now been followed by six weeks of programmatic activities right now. We are planning to do a grand opening in mid-June to celebrate the youth in our community and hope you will plan to join us. At this time, I'd like to open forward any questions.
Council? Yes, Deborah?
Yes, I just, I have one question. Where did you say the facility was located?
It's 629 H Street. So it's a couple doors down from Wool Growers and right next to a candy shop, right across the street from the community center.
Thank you.
Go on to Mrs. Santos.
I don't know if you said it, but what year did the program start?
2014. Yes.
And all over or just here in Los Banos?
Actually, Merced County, starting 2014. The hub just opened, what, this year, 2018. But we've been in existence as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit since 2014.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Silveira?
So what's the, you guys have been open now, you said, for going on six weeks. What's the response been? Like, how many, how many youth are you guys bringing in on a weekly? Do you track it daily, weekly? Can you share some of those numbers with us?
Yeah, so we have, we track them differently, you know, on a day-to-day basis. We have different programs in there, but I would say, just off the top of my head, we're probably servicing currently right now, I would say about eight or nine youth per week, you know, coming in there. Participation has been a little slow at times, but since we, you know, been, you know, going and talking to, you know, probation, we see the numbers climbing. And especially once the community starts hearing about it and the kids start having, you know, some success, I think it's going to be a great program, and we're going to have more kids involved.
And then the only way that you referred into the program is through the probation department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you, do you see at any point, like, you know, maybe our own police department, maybe seeing some of those folks that meet that criteria, would they directly contact you, Jeff, or would it be a way that maybe they could start referring some of those folks in?
The answer is yes to all of what you just said.
Okay.
I've had conversations with Chief Breezy about how can we possibly grow this in the future. Within any new program, we want to be successful. With the definitions, as I spoke about earlier, of who's going to be involved in the program, we have a population already that meets that criteria, that has the needs that this program is going to serve. We want to work out some of the hiccups, work out some of the hurdles that are going to be there, and then eventually, there's going to be potentially other ways. We've talked about from schools, we've talked about directly from the police departments, but it's going to have to be an inter-agency collaboration with probation, with SWAG, with Los Banos Police, with potentially some schools, to work out how do we... Because what you don't want to do is you don't want to miss a high-risk kid who's being supervised by probation and a potential low-risk kid from the schools. If you mix those kids together, it's going to make the low-risk kid worse. And that's something that is going to be real important about working with the different agencies, to make sure we're not putting kids in the same room that could potentially cause more harm than good.
And then, so I, this is probably another question for you, Jeff, is long-term, the funding source, you have a grant funding now, how long does that go?
It is a three-year fund. And it was just, I believe, I'm going to get the exact numbers off, but it was somewhere about $960,000 over a three-year process. So this is in year one. There is a way that the first year, we're not going to utilize all the funds because it took a while to start up, and we can roll some over. They haven't made a decision what's going to happen at the end of the three years if there's any funding left over, but it's a program that I'm hoping at the end of the three years, there's going to be some continued funding to be able to make us successful and keep growing.
Perfect, thank you.
It's for you.
A question, Chief Kettering. First, you had said criminal activity and drugs, they have to be both, or is it one or the other or both?
The definition that was, is required for Prop 47 is the youth or young adult to be referred to a program and to be funded by Prop 47, they have to be criminally involved.
Criminally involved, okay.
That's one. That's a real weird definition.
I understand.
And I can come up with a lot of different ways of interpreting that, but that's how they defined it. In addition to that person who's criminally involved, they have to have some substance use, substance abuse issues. So there has to be both.
For this grant?
Correct.
They have to have both?
It's for this grant.
Okay. Which is pretty common when they...
And it is, and I mean, those can be...
They go hand-in-hand, don't they?
They can, and they can be very conservatively interpreted, or it can be, you can open it up, criminally involved means anybody who's contacted by Chief Breezy's organization, or it could be somebody who's already been through the juvenile court on probation and anything in between.
Very good. I'm pleased to see it, pleased to see you do what we can, and glad to see we got a grant and that you're bringing the grant over here. We have a very large, and we sit around and complain about the fact that, you know, we have so many children whose parents are absentee because of the commuters. Well, complaining doesn't fix anything. We have, this is one of the fixes for these children, particularly these high-risk children that are, that are, you know, they need more, they need a lot more. Low-risk children, sometimes they just need that little boost, but high-risk kids, they need a lot, and a lot of energy and a lot of time, and I'm pleased to see it. So I'm glad we're able to use a community center too. Good use of that building there, and it's close, good proximity you have there, just walk on over, so. Good to see, thanks for clearing that up, and all the support I can give from my seat, you have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes. The question I have is, with these children that you're going to be working with, where is it within the program that you get the family involved, the parents involved at some point in the treatment process of these kids?
Yes, I can answer that. At the beginning, we do bring all the families in, you know, the parents in. Most of them were, you know, single-parent homes, and, you know, they did come in and did our, you know, initial, you know, intake process, and then from there, they're always invited to come, you know, especially to the El Hova Noble, you know, circle, and then we do have, you know, the actual mentorship, you know, we go through the parents and see, you know, so we have a, we like to be transparent with the parent and make sure that if they have anything going on, they could give us a call and, you know, let us know kind of what's going on. And then, I mean, we have, you know, several, a couple kids who had some trouble at school, you know, was facing expulsion, so we kind of, you know, coached the parent to kind of, you know, kind of what's going on with that, and then the kid was, you know, let back at school this week. So, you know, just, you know, some, you know, misunderstandings, but the parent is, you know, all, you know, the whole process is always involved with this.
Okay, so let me see if I can push this a little bit further. It's good, you know, to hear that you're keeping the parents involved, but sometimes you have situations where the parent can be a part of the problem that the child is having. So is there some sort of way that you're connecting the two together and maybe helping the parent as well as the child?
With this, with this grant, I mean, we could refer, we could refer the parent, you know, to different other organizations, but as far as, you know, using, you know, the funding on this grant, there's nothing that, you know, we can do, you know, with this, you know, grant opportunity, but it's, as far as, you know, referring to our, you know, different collaborative partners, we, you know, do that all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff, you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that services were lacking on the west side. Why?
Why?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that. I'm sure funding has part of it. What keys in mind, and I think I told the story when I was here a few months ago, is I sat in a room just right across the street over there with about 30 people in it while we were doing focus groups to, on how to apply for this grant, and I asked the question, I said... And I asked the question, I said, "Can anybody name a service provider for youth in this community that is not a governmental agency?" And there were crickets. There was nobody, and there was representatives from various aspects of this community in there, and nobody could tell me. I don't have that answer. I don't know why there's a lack of community-based organizations throughout Merced County. It's not just Los Banos, it's throughout the entire county. Um, I believe part of it is funding. Um, I believe that, um, you know, some agencies that have come in, they're having a hard time making ends meet. Um, I've seen community-based organizations that provide treatment rise and fall over the past twenty years, um, because they could not financially be successful in this county. Um, that was, again, I can go back in the circle, and that's why it was so important for me to give the majority of this funding to a community-based organization, because I want to see an agency, an organization, or more, be successful, get a, a kickstart, um, to potentially be successful for years to come.
So, so you're not referring to county funds in probation? You're referring to, uh, independent agencies coming in on the west side?
Probably a little of both. Um, I've never, I'm, as a probation department, we've not been asked to fund any other community-based organizations over in Los Banos. Um, but there's a lot of community-based organizations rely on some of their clients footing the bill. Um, and that is a very difficult task in this county. Um, and like I said, I've seen organizations come in with the best intentions, and they just haven't been able to be successful, and most of it is financial.
Well, I, I thank you for looking at that and, and divulging to us that, uh, that, that services are lacking over here, and I appreciate that. And I hope in the future now, when, you know, budget allocations come up, that knowing this, that you'll be able to, to better allocate funds to make sure the west side is included.
And that's important to me, and on a totally different topic, things that we try and, we have on the east side of our county, we can't always duplicate them exactly over here.
Uh-huh.
But we try and do, um, another version, the example I can give is our day reporting center for our adults on probation. We opened up a Los Banos office two years ago. Um, it serves a little smaller clientele, but it's, it's important to me, if I'm gonna provide services to my clients, Merced and Atwater and Livingston, the people over here are as important as them.
Well, we appreciate that.
It's important to me to try and at least provide a similar level of service over here, even though it may not be exact.
And that's all we could ask for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item eight, Recreation Program Update Presentation, Rob Baker.
Oh, okay. Let's see if I can do this now. Are we good? It says PC. Not politically correct, I mean. All right.
There we go. Okay, um, good evening, uh, mayor, city council members, staff. Um, I'm here this evening to talk about a lot of exciting, um, summer programs and activities we have going on for the youth and for the community of Los Banos this summer. Um, I will start by, um, start by, um, letting you know the importance of recreation. Um, it's very important that our community has recreation and multiple, um, various programs for our kids, adults, and seniors, it helps bring the community together. I think it's very important, gives people a chance to come together and, um, meet people, um, be active, and at times even have some fitness involved in that. We have a lot of wonderful camps this summer, um, a couple I'm gonna touch on this evening is Skyhawk Youth Sports Camp. Um, a lot of exciting camps for our, um, youth this summer. We're gonna be, um, offering a Minihawk, which is a soccer-baseball camp for ages four to seven years old. Um, we'll be doing flag football camp, basketball camp, volleyball, and baseball. Um, these will be two different sessions, um, throughout the summer. And, um, they'll give parents and kids an opportunity to possibly do multiple camps the same week, or one camp, one session, one another, um, but gives you a variety of times and flexibility, sometimes people are going on vacation and whatnot. So, um, that keeps, um, the schedule flexible. Merced Youth, or Merced College, we're partnering with them this summer, um, for Los Banos College for Kids. Um, we tried that a few years ago, and we brought that program back this summer, and we're really excited about that. Also, um, we're gonna be doing a variety of sports camps, uh, basketball, football, soccer, track and field, volleyball, um, and tennis also. Another key to Merced College, partnering with them that we're excited about is, um, we're using a lot of local, um, people in Los Banos, a lot of local high school coaches. So, um, it's kind of like bringing the community together and providing that service for the kids. Um, there's a variety of enrichment classes, um, art history, chocolate candy-making, a circuit board, which is kinda like a computer technology, um, science, a little bit in there, kind of a class, um, and the baking decorating, um, for kids, so we're very excited about that. We're running two sessions this summer for that. Um, session one is June 18th through June 28th, and session two is July 9th through July 19th. Also, um, we are having a few camps that are similar, but different style camps, different coaches, um, different times. Um, so there's a good variety of opportunity there for the community this summer. Um, a couple other areas I'm gonna touch on is our Pilates Bar Class. We just started that class about three, four weeks ago at the community center, and we're really excited about that. Having Yvette Sanchez on board and working with our Recreation Division. That class is up and going, it's small right now, but we're hoping that that will increase, um, as time goes on. We're really excited to be able to offer that at our fitness room throughout the week. Um, Champion Youth, um, it's a class we've had since last fall. Um, it's a cheer dance class for girls, uh, it's been very popular. We've had anywhere from twenty-five to forty kids regularly since last September, and we're continuing with them this spring and summer, and we'll be talking with them, um, for fall and winter classes also. So really happy to have them and have a lot more, um, going on to provide for the community. Just a quick overview of our other programs on there too, um, for your information there. Um, special events, um, as you guys know, um, Breakfast of Santa's always been really popular for the kids during the holidays. Um, movie nights, um, we're gonna be having two movie nights this summer, one in June and one in July. Um, it's a good time to bring the community together, um, come out at dusk and watch a movie and hang out with, uh, community and friends, have beverages, popcorn, and whatnot. Most importantly, the most exciting part about this slide, um, for us is the Zombie Run, we started last year in September. Um, we're really excited about that. It was a really, um, great turnout and a really great success, and we're hoping to build on that, um, this coming year. Um, the main thing at the events, um, for us is, it's really important because it brings, um, people together in our community um, of all ages and gets everybody together to have fun and, um, to meet new people, so we're really excited about that. We're also hoping to, um, add events in the near future to the Parks and Recreation Division. Senior activities, we have a variety of senior activities that go on throughout the week, um, throughout the year. Um, bingo, card playing, pickleball, macho, arts and crafts, classes for seniors. Um, we do offer some high-cap and legal services, and we have a county lunch program currently at the community center. Um, the most exciting part for the seniors is the Sleet the Senior Fair annually, um, every September. The last Friday in September, um, was a good, good event again this year. Uh, it gives the seniors an opportunity to come out and socialize. Um, vendor booths and, uh, play bingo, have a nice lunch, and just mingle and, and come together. The other part that's really special for the Sleet the Seniors and for some individuals is it's a chance for staff to recognize, um, some individual seniors who might have done something really special in the community or through an organization, made an impact on someone's life or in the community, so it gives us time that day to recognize those people. Uh, this is a brief overview of our recreation programs, um, the revenues for, we're projecting for seventeen eighteen and estimated for eighteen nineteen. Um, our youth programs are doing really well. Um, we're always looking to bring in, um, new ideas from the communities that we can add, um, to the Recreation Division if, um, funding is available and staff to be able to put that on. Uh, we're always looking for new contracted classes at the community center and offsites. Um, wide variety of activities and classes for the community is really good. Um, contractors are, contracted classes are really good for us and, um, for our division. The next slide here, um, kinda gives you a breakdown of population from 2010 to 2018. Um, we're breaking down our youth programs. Um, as you can see, the population of Los Banos continues to grow annually, and still have a number of participants in our youth programs. Um, but this trend of growth, it is expected to continue. With our community growing as rapidly as ours, it's really important that our division, um, grows with the growth of the community. Um, our programs are doing really well. Um, we're exceeding over five hundred kids for youth basketball and youth soccer, um, this past year, and we're just looking to hopefully continue to build on those numbers and programs even, to continue to even get bigger. Uh, this is a quick overview of our outside rentals, outside of the community center, college greens, Miller and Lux, um, ballfields and park rentals. Um, this is our, um, projected revenue for seventeen eighteen and our estimated numbers for, um, eighteen nineteen. Um, special recreation functions, um, I did add the Sleet the Senior Fair and senior classes and activities, um, to that, but, um, just going back on the slide from previously, this is giving you a quick overview of the revenue that was brought in for the Sleet the Senior Fair, um, senior activities throughout the year, uh, we're projecting through June, our Breakfast of Santa event, and what we made on the Zombie Run last fall. Uh, the next slide here is revenue versus expenditures. Um, this is an overall revenue of our programs and also all of our rentals, um, put together. And then at the bottom is our expenses, our overhead, um, what it takes to put the programs on, and the overall, um, recreation budget. Um, so we're at two thirty-seven, one fourteen, um, estimated for seventeen eighteen, and looking to be a little on the conservative side for eighteen nineteen at two thirty-six, five. Um, you do see and notice a significant jump of about $60,000 in expenses from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen. Um, we do have a capital project that we're gonna be doing at the College Greens facility, that's roughly gonna be about $35,000 next, um, budget year, and a phone system project, um, of about $5,000. And there's been some increase, or we're hoping for some increase in line items, um, for some program costs and equipment and whatnot, and then, uh, obviously, staff and, and benefits are also included in all of that. The community center this year has done really well, um, with the grand room, um, one of the best years we've had since, um, we opened the center. Um, we're projecting to make a little over ninety-one thousand on, on rentals to date, on what we have on the books through June 30th and possibly even a little bit more than that. Um, multi-purpose room doesn't really get rented out a whole lot, it's more of a practice facility. Um, we are looking to do some three-on-three tournaments, um, with a couple church groups coming up, and hopefully we can do one of, one of those once a month for teenage, probably twelve-to-sixteen-year-old boys and girls. So excited about that and hoping we can get that up, off the ground. Uh, meeting rooms, um, done really well. The other room, um, revenue you see there is seventy-four hundred, that is from the Champion Youth. There's actually not a contracted class, it is a, um, they do rent the fitness room from us on Monday and Wednesdays, um, from five to eight P.M. Um, Boys and Girls Club, um, staff has been working with their staff since the beginning of the calendar year, and we're very excited and hopeful that we will be bringing a Boys and Girls Club summer program to the community center this year, um, for the kids of Los Banos. Um, it's very exciting to us, and we're hoping it all comes together. Um, I will be meeting with, um, Paul Millsap, the Vice President of Boys and Girls Club through Merced County, next week on sitting down and thoroughly going through scheduling, um, of the community center, what we have going on and where we can fit them in, um, with the kids. It'll be Monday through Friday, seven A.M. to seven P.M., so it's a very, very active, um, program, and, um, we're very excited and hopeful that, um, that'll be at the community center this summer. Um, with that being said, beyond the, um, summer program, it is a year-round program that we're hoping to get that going. It'll be kinda like an after-school program, um, starting in the fall in September, um, probably from three to seven or eight P.M. And we'll be looking at funding options and how we can coordinate that between the city, um, recreation, and the Boys and Girls Club. Um, that concludes my, um, PowerPoint presentation at this time. Um, I did give you guys the, uh, flyers and handouts. If you guys have any questions at this time, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
All right, um, let's go on to Mr. Faria, first?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, I just have comments, I'm very pleased to see the expansion of the program. I'm also very se, pleased to see the Boys and Girls Club being brought to town. Uh, the first time I saw them in action, uh, their program in action in Merced and their facility there, I said, "We need that in Los Banos," beautifully run, the programs are prepackaged. Um, the thing is, has been over the years is finding the funding, and we're now working to do that. Uh, they, I think they do it as well as anyone, better than anyone from what I've seen.
Yeah.
Um, they're very, very good. Matter of fact, I, I think I still may have the email from about two thousand seven or eight that I sent to, uh, one of our graduates who ran a Boys and Girls Club up in Petaluma. And I, I talked to her about it, and she gave me a whole rundown on potential and whatnot, and just convinced me that it was the right thing to do for Los Banos, I'm pleased to see that. Pleased to see all the recreation programs expanding. Um, I, I noticed an interesting little trend on T-ball dropping, is that because the smaller-aged children were...
Uh, the T-ball program has dropped a little bit the last three years, because Little League has, um, incorporated their T-ball program.
Okay.
Back into their, um, organization, so it's kinda dropped our number off a little bit on the, like, five to eight-year-old age groups.
And so, Little League...
Three, four guys are still all of ours at this time.
Okay, so Little League has a T-ball program within them?
They do, they used to have one, then they went away from it, and our numbers kinda jumped.
Mm-hmm.
Probably a hundred more kids than where we've been the last two years.
Okay.
Um, but they started their T-ball program back up, I think, two or three years ago.
Very good.
So we've lost a few kids from that, but they could technically play both, but, you know.
Sure.
However.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm pleased to see all the children involved, those numbers are wonderful. Um, and please, all your hard work, we don't have much staff in our recreation department. Uh, is it still just one and a half?
Uh...
Something to that effect?
One, yeah, one point one five?
One point one five. So you think about all, even when, uh, want the public to realize, when they look at those numbers, hundreds and hundreds of children, thousands of children involving these activities, um, it, it's, as far as paid city staff, all we do is kinda coordinate the thing, and it's all these volunteers, these coaches, and these contract programs, these leagues that, that make all this happen, and so we very much appreciate it. And that's that community involvement we've been talking about all night long. Thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you. And that volunteerism has been going on for about sixty, seventy years in this town.
That's what makes it happen.
Yeah. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanna echo what, uh, Councilman Faria has indicated. Um, I'm really proud of our recreation department with a number of people that we have and what we're able to put on, uh, for our community, for youth, as well as adults. And, um, with the growth that, um, you know, you've shown here, and especially bringing on the Boys and Girls Clubs. Um, and, and I do want the public to know that, um, despite all of this, you know, this ci, the city runs in the red every year with the budget for this. Uh, for 2017, it's almost a hundred thirty-seven thousand, and next year it'll be almost two hundred thousand. But we're still putting on these things for our community. So, um, when people think that, you know, the city has a lot of money to do different things with, just know that, um, that there is a cost to do this, and the city has reached out to fund this program anyway so that our children, and so the adults in the community can have things to do throughout the year. things to do throughout the year. We also have an agreement with the school district for joint use, and there are funds that we pay out additionally for the use of their facilities as well. So for a small community such as Los Banos and the budget that we have, I think we're doing an excellent job to try to provide these services to our community as part of the, not necessarily mandated, but part of the budget process that we do annually for the community. And thank you again for all that you do.
Rob, do we have any kind of scholarship program? I'm looking at the cost of some of these.
We do have scholarship programs. We've gotten some scholarship money the last couple of years from Sutter Memorial. They've helped out with that. We do ask that individual households, it's based on income in households and how many kids you have in your family and whatnot, but we ask that they pay half, and then with the funding there, we come up with the other half for those families.
You know, I called my daughter in Illinois because they're seven and nine-year-old grandchildren, and I asked her about the programs over there. And I was amazed at the cost that she and her husband have to pay for the after-school programs and the recreation programs in Illinois. And that's not a rich community, it's not a rich community at all. And so I looked at this, and I'm trying to get some kind of gauge as to, you know, what we're doing as compared to other people, and it just seems like if you want a program, there's got to be some money involved. And how do we come up with those funds? I'm glad to hear that there is a scholarship program that we can include more youth in this community, so thank you. Okay, Mr. Silveira?
Yeah, Rob. Back on your slide that showed the T-ball, basketball, soccer numbers, I mean, I see you explained the reason why T-ball went down, but what are we doing to address that in the last eight years, the soccer numbers have, you know, gone up by, I'm going to call it thirty, forty percent? I mean, we're three eighty-six to now to five seventy-five. Are we working on anything to, are we all still playing on that same, the same fields over there on, at Olive River Park?
We did two years ago, last year, obviously because it's been under construction, we played at Vineyards on Seventh Street, the basin there. We'll probably, we'll be playing there again this fall. It does actually gives us, it's a bigger area to get all the teams in, and we're looking at probably like forty to forty-five teams again for soccer, so we can run a couple extra field or two that way over there.
Okay. The other question, back on the, when you showed the revenues and the expenses, on the expenses, what portion of that goes to basically wages, salaries and all that, and what portion goes to the programs? Because I'm guessing the expenses on that is, that's everything for the department combined, correct?
Correct.
So do you have an idea of what percentage of that is going to, to the wages and salaries of the department? And when, and included, I would guess that included in that would be all the part-time employees that we bring on as well?
I could get that for you. I don't have that number.
Okay, I would like to have that number. And then, can you give me a rough breakdown? I'm just going to pull this up, for example. This is a handout that was given to us this evening, and it shows that if you want to attend a football sports camp, it says the college for kids, it costs sixty-five dollars. Can you kind of explain the breakdown on where that money goes? Like, what is the break, I mean, I'm sure that the kids probably get like a T-shirt or something.
Yeah, kids get a T-shirt, they get the camp for the week, oh, it's actually Monday through Thursday for two weeks, and it's a, we're partnering with the college, so we're getting the percentage of the money, and also they're paying the coach or coaches to put the camp on.
So the college is paying for the coaches?
Yes.
And then?
They pay for all the advertising for us, too.
Okay, perfect. So, and it's one hour a day for ten days, correct? So it's ten hours? Nine-thirty to ten-thirty A M., July ninth through the nineteenth? Okay. And then, one other question is on the Community Center facility uses. Do you roughly have a percentage of the time that the facility, so the multi-purpose room, that's the basketball, the gym part of it, correct? What percentage of the time is that, is that room being rented out?
More or less?
I guess what percentage of the time are we renting it versus putting that out there for people to use, making it available for people?
Right now, the multi-purpose room is being used quite a bit. We have pickleball groups coming in the mornings, three to four days a week, from nine to noon, nine to one or two. We have open gym basketball for all ages from three o'clock on. That's basically the use of it at the moment. Depends on the time of the year. Like, we have our youth basketball program, we have practices for all the teams and coaches and kids for those two months every day.
Okay, so then my last question is, is I look at the numbers that you're projecting for the eighteen nineteen budget, and it's, when it comes to revenues and expenses, you said there was roughly sixty thousand of that was for one-time expenses of some programs that we're going to, for remodeling of, what is it, the College Greens facility?
It was about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-four, thirty-five?
We're in a nation project next year.
So, why, the increase, is that because of the Boys and Girls Club coming in over this summer, or what is the, because I see, I mean, we go from three hundred and seventy-three to four hundred and thirty-six. So you take out the thirty-five thousand, that still puts us an additional twenty-eight thousand dollars above. Is there a specific reason for that?
Maybe employee benefits, and we're requesting a couple increases on some line items for programming for next year.
Perfect. And so where I kind of, where this line of questioning is going, Rob, is, again, I feel like you guys are doing the best that you can do with the resources that you have. But right now, for, you know, what I'm currently involved in, I'm out and I'm talking to a lot of folks, and they feel like that there's just not enough stuff for kids to do. And one of the things, and I appreciate that you guys are making do with what you have, and you're offering a lot of programs, and I tell people that, you know, there are things for kids to do, but it also takes some parent involvement. There's probably not a lot of places where you could just go drop your kid off for eight hours and somebody's going to watch them and take care of them, but if you want to be involved in your children's lives, there are things to do. I mean, I have a twelve and fourteen-year-old at home, and there's times when my wife's going one way with one and I'm going the other way with the other, and so there are things to do. But, you know, I also would like to see this council make an investment, and not something that we're going to be adding employees, right? Because ultimately, we have to, we have the reality of the economy and what it does, and God knows we have issues coming up with our retirement system and all those things. But add some monies in there to, to our Parks and Rec program in order to, you know, see if there's more programs, what can you, if you're doing this with what you have now, what can you do if this council decides to put some more money into Parks and Rec? To see what kind of, and to me, a part of that would be, I know that I'm excited about the Boys and Girls Club coming here this summer, but I know that's going to, that's going to cost, that's going to, that's what kind of our contribution to them coming here is, we're going to be offering up our facilities, it's going to cost us a little bit of money, and I think that's a good investment. So any kind of monies we move going forward, I think that, you know, that has to be part of that. But I just think if you guys are doing the job you're doing now with what you have, what can be done if this council makes a decision to put a little bit more into it? And ultimately, we are elected by our constituents, and they, the directive that I'm getting from them is that they want to see the city offer more programs for our youth. That's, it's, it's a pretty common theme anywhere you go in the city of Los Banos right now. So this is kind of stuff, I know this, I asked for, and I don't think I'm the only reason why we got this, this workshop tonight, this presentation, but I want people to understand what we're doing, and in my opinion, if we can do, if we can come up with and find a way to do a bit more, what kind of other programs could be offered. So thank you guys for what you are doing, and something hopefully we may be able to address at budget time.
All right, thank you. Hey, I'm going to go to Director Faishen first.
Just a couple responses. You asked a couple questions about how big the programs were. Soccer and basketball are sort of maxed out as far as people goes for what we can run now. That's kind of where you were going with that. Soccer gets very, that pretty much occupies all our facilities at the five hundred and thirty market, it's pretty busy. The other thing to think about, Merced College for Kids was here three or four years ago, maybe even further, and it disappeared because of attendance. So we have to have an attendance to happen, and some of the costs that you see this more is advertising, actually, getting out there and advertising more and doing more of that. And I just want to make sure that you know a little bit what's happened with the Boys and Girls Club. Rob's been working really hard with them. We're planning on bringing their MOU here on May sixteenth, and that will, at this point, that for the summer program only, that will require the use of the facility, and they're going to work out times. We may lose one or two programs there, but we will be able to run most of our other programs at the same time, and it's going to require financial investment from the city besides that, and so far, in the summer, the estimate's about thirteen thousand. That will be in the MOU that comes forward. And then we'll be looking at what happens in a full year-round program. The first estimate that we got, you have to commit to a three-year program with them, and it's about three hundred and fifty thousand to run a full-year program. That's the whole cost. We haven't broke it out yet because we're worried about the summer program at the moment, because you can imagine, May sixteenth is supposed to start June first, so we're really tight. But yeah, we are moving forward, and it will require your approval. We're not doing anything without approval because it requires general fund money or a way to get maybe some funding besides that, but especially for the summer, to get them in here in the summer. But we're looking for that, really excited about that. Hopefully it meets your approval when it comes forward. And thank you, Rob, you do so much.
Let's go to Director Williams, Finance Director.
So I brought my budget. I just wanted to help Rob out and chime in about the salary questions that you had. So recreation is combined in the budget with its recreation, and then we have senior programs. And so the total salaries for the two combined is two hundred and eighteen thousand approximately. These are budgeted numbers, so this was at the beginning of seventeen eighteen year, and that's with a budget of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, so about fifty-seven percent in that budget, Scott. And then for the Community Center, we budgeted about seventy-three thousand for personnel, and that's a total budget of two hundred thousand. So those are the personnel numbers that we have for you. They did increase a little bit at mid-year when we increased OPEB, and we did put a little bit additional funding in there for recreation, so they're not exact, but that's a pretty close estimate.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, before I go to Mrs. Santos, I can tell you that from the heart, everyone on this council over the years wants to put more money towards a number of programs. And at budget time, staff is going to come forward with a budget that they think they should put forward. And I hope that does include more money for recreation. And everyone on this council wants to see that happen, unless I'm wrong, council. And if there is, if there is a way to allocate more funds, I don't think there's anyone on this council that would vote against it for recreation. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. So first, I want to say thank you because I do have many nieces and nephews who are involved in the programs that you guys provide, so thank you very much. But one question about the Boys and Girls Club, were the, well, I guess in clubs in general, were there other ones that we had reached out to, other clubs for youth as well, or just kind of Boys and Girls Club was kind of like the number one?
Yeah, it's pretty much been Boys and Girls Club. We tried a couple years ago, and we kind of got to the funding monies, and it kind of stopped. This is the farthest, definitely the furthest we've gotten since the center opened to partner with them.
All right, but my main comment was to say that, yeah, I do appreciate the services that you do offer. It's very nice to see, I've been to a lot of the youth soccer games, and it's, especially on Vineyard, the street is cluttered with cars because there's so many people that go to those events, so thank you very much for that.
Rob, how's this going to coordinate with PAL?
Which part?
The recreation, I mean, because we have, what does PAL offer? What kind of sports does PAL?
PAL does girls softball, junior giants, and flag football.
Uh huh. Okay, so this won't be a conflict with anything as far as Boys and Girls Club or anything?
No, not at all.
Okay. Because PAL's done a wonderful job in this community for many, many years, and we want to make sure there's parity with all the programs.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go to our city manager next.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to follow up to Mark's comments. What we're seeing this summer, really through the efforts of the recreation staff, is significantly more offerings this summer. So what we need to do is get the word out to the community and get folks to enroll their kids. So there is more to do this summer, but we need the enrollment to support the programs so Merced College, Skyhawks, Boys and Girls Clubs can be here on a sustainable basis, and we can continue to offer these programs. So we need to get the word out, and more importantly, we need folks to register their kids for these increased offerings. I know it's, I'm pleased that we're seeing these increased offerings, so thank you, Rob, and appreciate the hard work.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing all the social media sites, Facebook, various departments, our own, flyers to the schools, handed out all this information to all the PAL softball teams right before the end of their program, two weeks ago, getting the flyers information out to Little League. So hopefully, I mean, we're going to do all we can, and whatever else we can come up with to get the word out, we will, we will be doing, trying to work together with other organizations and trying for the benefit of the kids and the community.
So I see a lot of classes from Merced College, the ones you were talking about, chocolate candy-making and art history, and these will all be out at the college?
These will all be here at the Community Center.
At the Community Center.
And then some of the camps will be offsite. Some things will be at Seventh Street, some things will be at the high school facilities, various areas.
Okay, fantastic. Council, any other questions? Mr. Fariah?
Just one more comment, if they, the candy and cookie baking activity, please let them know they're free to bring their samples, and they're, to council for, so we can, you know, certify, yes, the quality of their work, and we'd be glad to offer our time and energy to...
Find out how good the instructor is.
Yeah, and how good the kids are, you know. Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nine, consideration of requests from Habitat for Humanity West Side to waive all of the city of Los Banos development impact fees for the project located five forty-one M. Street in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. And we're going with our Community and Economic Development Director, Stacy Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a PowerPoint presentation with this item tonight.
I'm getting there. All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have to count to three, you know.
So the request before you tonight is from Habitat for Humanity West Side. The request is for the city council to consider waiving all or a portion of development impact fees in the total of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents associated with the construction of five four one M. Street. So the background on this particular item, it was approved for the rehabilitation of two existing homes. So Habitat for Humanity in two thousand and fifteen provided an application in February to the Planning Department for a general plan amendment, a zone change, as well as a tentative parcel map. The Planning Commission approved that, or made a recommendation to the city council for approval of the general plan amendment and the zone change, and then approved the tentative parcel map. And then the city council approved those entitlements for that general plan amendment and that zone change. And what that did was it took three lots and it created essentially five. Four lots, though, were created for residential development. Those three original lots were originally zoned, R-one, low-density residential, and they were rezoned to medium-density residential to be able to allow smaller lot sizes to be able to accommodate four units. Without the zone change or the general plan amendment, only three units... Without the zone change or the general plan amendment, only three units would have been allowed at that site. So then they were approved for the rehabilitation of two existing homes, and then also approved for the construction of two new single-family homes. But staff did determine that one of the units was destroyed due to a fire, and the city did give full credit for the replacement and the reconstruction of that particular unit. So 537 and 549 M Street were rehabs of two existing homes, and 545 and 541 M Street were brand-new construction, and 545 was given the full credit due to that replacement of a previous unit. And also, the city did defer payment of development impact fees prior to final inspection, which is a policy that the city does for any development. So development impact fees, currently, we have, we do not have a formal policy to process requests for waivers or partial waivers of development impact fees. The city does not have a policy. And as you can recall, last year, in about August of 2017, a request was before the city council for a fee waiver from, for Overland Courts, a nonprofit affordable housing builder that was asking for a fee waiver for the community facilities district fees. And at that time, the city council did not approve that request for those 70 units. This new unit will not have any less impact as compared to a similar market-rate home. As listed within your staff report, there are various impact, development impact fee categories that make up the $25,138.40. Those categories are, just to name a few, because they're all listed within that staff report, are police and fire. This new unit will have an impact, a new impact on police and fire. It will create additional traffic. So there's a traffic impact fee. There's a water impact fee, wastewater. So there's, they're taking up capacity at our wastewater treatment plant. They're adding additional flow to our sewer system, our water system. And those capital improvements that the city is required to maintain, new development pays through impact fees their portion of that impact. So the fiscal impact to the city, and it is, I did go through that within the staff report, and I just want to reiterate that historically, the redevelopment agency provided relief for impact fee waivers. There was various creative land transfers that were done all the way back from 1998, looking at historically that relationship with Habitat for Humanity in Los Banos specifically. There was a parcel on the corner of G and First Street that the RDA, looking at their archives, they did transfer at at no cost to Habitat. And then Habitat, Habitat built three new homes on that one parcel and was able to house three families. The city has also worked with Habitat, with, as Ms. Sandy Lemus explained, with the 11 units through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP program. That funding was not an RDA funding, although the RDA helped facilitate, manage that program while they were in existence. That funding, NSP, was granted to the City of Los Banos. And the City of Los Banos worked with Habitat and and through the RDA as well to, they purchased, Habitat purchased 11 foreclosed homes, and then were able to get Habitat-eligible families into those homes. And also, as Mrs. Lemus stated with, at the public forum, that money, as those mortgages do get paid, does get turned back to the state of California. It does not get put into a revolving loan fund. The city cannot keep it to turn around and add to more affordable housing. It gets back to, it goes back to the state of California. So for future development, just to explain on impact fees, the government code is very particular on what impact fees can be used for and what fees can be used to pay impact fees. So future development, it is very clear that within the government code, that future development cannot pay the gap of impacts created by this unit or any unit that the city would give any waiver or partial waiver. Development is to pay their own impact, but that impact which new development creates. So new, we wouldn't be able to, should say, the council tonight decide to grant the fee waiver, we'd not be able to pass that on to new development and incorporate that into their fees. That's against the law. Also, any offset would need to be subsidized by the general fund or any other funding source that the city has. Currently, right now, we do not have any other funding sources. The general fund is our only revenue source that would be applicable to subsidizing the gap that would be created if a waiver is given for these particular impact fees for this unit at 541 M Street. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, Mrs. Rivera?
Yeah, Stacy. So I'm going to go back to a statement you made, and I just want to tell you that I disagree with it. I disagree with the statement that this home will have the same impact as a new residential unit. I, I, will it, will they create additional demand on the system that is at a higher level than what currently is zero? Absolutely. But when I look at a, the organization, what they've been able to accomplish, I think if there was ever a worthy cause, this is the worthy cause. I think, and I get, I had a long discussion earlier today about that, you know, it, so are my, are we setting a precedent that any infill project shouldn't have to pay impact fees? No, that's not the precedent I'm setting. What I'm saying is, is that this house on M Street, M Street's been here a long time, a lot longer than I've been here. The sewer lines that are in there, I don't know when they were, the last time they were replaced, but they already exist. The water lines that are in there, they already exist. The street, again, I said already exist. So are they going to, is there, is there going to be an extra car or two that goes down that street? Absolutely. I'm not going to disagree with that. Are they going to be putting wastewater into our wastewater system? Absolutely not going to disagree with that. But to say that that, that it's creating the impact, the same impact as a new single unit, a single residential unit, no, I don't think so. That, that's, that's completely adding, everything has to be new, right? That, that, that sewer line for that new, is a new, it's a new piece. That's new water lines that goes out to that new development. So I, I'm for the fee waiver. The one thing that, because when we, when you talked about, I think back in August, when we did, when it was the Overland Courts project, we denied it. One of the things that I will say is, is for police impact and fire impact fees, there is going to be an additional impact to the city. And so I know that there's, there's different options out there, and I obviously want to hear what the rest of the council has to say. But as, as kind of a compromise of not giving all the fees, waiving all the fees, but, you know, I would like to, you know, we can collect the, the police impact fees and the fire impact fees. I think those are very vital to public safety, and I don't think anybody would disagree with that. But I, and the other question that, so that's just, and I'm sorry, Stacy, that, but I just disagreed with that statement. Then my next question is, is to Mr. Vaughn. Is it, we're under, is it, I don't know, I don't know if we call it a statute, a policy, that if we decided to do a fee waiver, that we would have, it would have to come from the general fund? Is, can you lighten me a little bit on that?
Well, you could decide not to fund it, and you would have a gap in your impact fee program of the amount of money that was shortfall due to this unit. So the, this unit would be programmed into what the fees are. And if you don't collect this unit, you can't use that money. There would be a gap in the funding for the infrastructure that's planned for that particular fee, if that makes sense. So you could decide not to, but you might not be able to create the capital, and you might not be able to construct the capital that's planned for that particular fee because you're short. Now, would this particular unit cause that shortage? Probably not. But then what about the next one, and the next one, and the next one, and the next one? All of a sudden, you cannot, if you haven't backfilled it with general fund money, you're not going to be able to build the infrastructure that's planned into your program. So the only, the fee waiver programs I've seen in other, in other jurisdictions, they typically require that, that there be some other funding source to make up for whatever they're waiving. And typically, it's the general fund or some other funding source. So there is no law that says you have to backfill it with general fund money. It's probably the only source you can. You can't use other fees to backfill it. So you can't charge the next-door neighbor a higher fee because their neighbor didn't pay or got a waiver for this fee. So that, the issue becomes essentially you're shorting, you're shorting your projections for the capital improvements you want to make, in this case by whichever fee. If it's the total, total, you're shorting your capital improvement funding by $24,000. So you may not be able to construct the new water capacity or the new sewer capacity or the new stoplight. Now, again, when we're talking like one time, $24,000, it's probably not going to like stop any of those programs. But then how do you not grant a fee waiver for the next worthy cause that comes before you asking the same thing? So, no, there is nothing in the government code that says you have to backfill that. It's just that you start risking your whole program if you start a waiver program and you, and you don't have some type of plan to backfill that. I, I don't think the finance director thinks, I think we had this discussion earlier this week. There's no other funding source, either it doesn't get funded or it would come out of the general fund. So it would come out of the Recreation Department monies, for instance. It would come out of other programs that you are trying to stretch all these dollars for. So, and then in answer to your, so I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
So there's nothing in, there's nothing in AB 600 that says you have to use general fund monies to make up the difference, just that you can't use, there are no other monies to make up the difference. So what makes up the difference is not doing the program that you want to do. Maybe that's the last dollar necessary for your police station. These are just for capital improvements. They're not for maintenance. So that, that's, that's, that's the equation that the city is trying to work through.
Thank you. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Freya, then our city manager.
I don't know whether this question would be for our staff or for Habitat. I, I guess since we're involved in this, we, I guess we can, we can ask what the actual price of this home is to the, to the home buyer? I wonder if someone could answer that for me? That'd be the first question I have.
So we're still finalizing numbers, but it's going to be somewhere in the like, probably 130 range, 140.
130, okay. And I'm assuming they're going to be set up on a loan, with a loan and a payment plan, and then it's a no-interest loan, is that correct? Or there is an interest rate?
0% interest.
Oh, it's zero. It's zero, okay. And how many years about?
30 years.
It's a 30-year. Okay, so.
Well, I say 30. I meant, we, we do a 20-year loan. Depending on the family's income, if, if they, if the payment is going to be more than 30% of their income, then we can extend the loan slightly, so like to 25 years or 30. So most of our loans are 20 years.
Okay, based on a family's income?
Based on family's income.
Okay, so $130,000, anybody quick here with real estate loans? $130,000 financed over 20 years, payment off the top of our head? We have a number for that?
I should have brought it.
Pardon me? $542 a month. So what I'm looking at here is.
And that's the mortgage payment. So then we would have impounds as well for insurance.
Tax and insurance, probably be close to another 100, almost 100 other.
Probably another 200 or so, yeah. Yeah, about seven, between 7, 750.
Okay, so 750 at the top on a.
Taxes have gone up.
Yeah, yeah, yes, they have, yeah. Like Franklin was so right. So now when we collect, I'm going to go over to staff here, when we collect these fees, normally we collect this in total from the builder? Is that the way we normally do it, Stacy?
Wait, wait a minute. Let me get this here. There you go.
Yes, we do. So the builder is allowed to defer. They're typically due at building permit issuance, but we do allow deferral till final inspection, till that unit is ready to be occupied. And typically, that's because that'll be right before escrow closes and the money is wired, money is transferred. Essentially, that mortgage is created.
Okay, so then if that were, if this, if we did not waive the fees as staff recommends, then Habitat would front that money? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then now this loan is being held by Habitat?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a possible way to, I'm looking for a Solomonic solution. We don't want to cut the baby in half. Would it be possible for in these cases of these worthy cause situations, where we have a slow income, rather than take the entire fee upfront, to spread it out the way a homeowner spreads out a mortgage? So it would be, you know, 25,000 over 20 years, we're looking at, what, about $100 a month? Would be about $100 a month more in their payment. And if there's a way that the city could work that out, we would still get our money. It would be less painful for the homeowner. Habitat wouldn't have to front it. And so if that, if that solution would work, I would be very supportive of that solution. And, you know, that would be something I, and maybe that's something we'd recommend. I don't, to continue to another meeting for all of you to be able to talk about it and draw the paper on it. But that, that, that would be my first inclination to try to do, to solve this very difficult problem. This very difficult challenge, in my opinion.
Gustine, Gustine has done a silent second for self-help enterprises, where if the house changed hands, and it didn't go into another low-income family's hands, meaning if the homeowner sold it to profit, the impact fees would be, would be paid.
Would then do it, do at.
Do at sale. But the way that, and I think Stacy might have mentioned it in the report, was we have a first right of refusal for the houses. So if a family were to want to sell it, we would most likely.
Try to buy it.
Yeah, buy it back, yeah.
Okay, so that, that would be my recommendation for a solution. And then, so thank you for your, for your input and your help. I hope, I hope that we can, you know, make it work as, as unpainful as possible. Thing is, we have to realize, this is a good cause. We're helping these people. We all have to have to realize, we're also responsible for 39,000 other people.
Yeah.
And so that's the balance that we have to deal with here. So those are my recommendations, and I'll, I'll leave it to the rest of the, the council and staff. And I want to, to discuss if that's, if that's a feasible idea.
So if I may interject, just a, you know, a brief history. I went up and looked the stats up, and as Stacy has said, the city's contributed almost $2.2 million right now to Habitat. And, you know, the state of California, when they took away the RDA, it took away our ability to, to, to give more money. And, and the RDA was a wonderful thing if it was used correctly. And this is one of the correct uses of RDA. And I, you know, neighborhood stabilization funds that we had, two grants to the tune of 2 million, $1 million each, $2 million. And that helped to purchase 11 Habitat homes. And then we purchased a property, and then we paid the, the impact fees for, for three other homes, of which Habitat built. Habitat is a wonderful program. Wish I had more time to volunteer for Habitat. Whatever we do tonight, this is a needy project, but what I've learned in education, there has to be a policy and a procedure. Because going forward, what's going to happen, if we granted all the funds tonight, we'd be heroes for a meeting. But then the next meeting. But then the next meeting, they, you have another house too, don't you? Another new house?
The other one, the house, they grandfathered in the impact fees, so those aren't, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a gentleman who, in my area, is gonna build 11 low-income houses. And he's a good builder. And I'm a little bit concerned. Stacy, can you address that for a minute?
Sure, so if the city council can recall, also last year, granted a general plan amendment and a zone change to Mr. Joe Rocha, converted those professional office seven lots into 11 medium-density for affordable housing. They're on Delaware in between Madrone and Pine. So it is for affordable housing, and they won't be, they will be rental units. But he's also on 7th and East Street. He has rehabbed two duplexes and will be building two more duplexes on that and a triplex this coming year as well. And, you know, would also be seeking, if, if relief is given for affordable housing, you would explore in the future that relief as well.
Yeah, and I mean, the difference is he's for, I mean, he's doing it for profit, I would guess. Habitat is doing it at no profit. We're just trying to bring it back around for the next family.
Right, I'm looking at the legality.
Sure.
Of, of who qualifies, whether Habitat's doing it for nonprofit and, or he's doing it to reduce rent. I'm looking at the legality where, where we, we can't make a decision that's gonna cause pain for, for the city and the council.
Yeah.
Whatever we decide tonight, I, my suggestion would be if we go with Mr. Fariah, or, or we're, we're doing part or all. The other thing in the mix that we have is if we have a policy or procedure, and if we decide that funding is a great option, what type of money would we put forward for everyone to avail themselves of? And if that, if that was a policy, how much would it be? And if we have part or all of the fees? Or if we have a procedure that, that would, would say that we'd spread the payments out? My recommendation would be to, to give staff time to investigate that for us, to find out the legalities of what Mr. Silveira wants, Mr. Fariah wants, and maybe what I would like is putting a certain amount for a policy and a procedure. And then come back to us with some recommendations. And to see what's legal, what's not legal, and again, the payment plan of how we could get our money back or not get our money back. Is it a gift or is it a spread-out payment? And I think all of us want to help in some form. But I think tonight, my preference would be not to say yea or nay to your request, but to continue it and morph it into other forms, to see if it's possible. And if staff comes back and says that, hey, wait a minute here, you know, you're opening yourself up for something else, then Bill could maybe get involved. Correct, Bill? Yeah, right.
Mayor?
Okay, so that, that's kind of my preference.
I, I agree. I think a policy, the fact that we've seen this come a couple of times, and we don't have a policy in place, maybe it's time to put a policy in place. You know, the best gift you can give somebody is a rulebook, something to follow, and then everybody's on the same page all the time. And so I think that would be a really good thing to do, is actually to pursue a policy on this and, and move as quickly as possible with it so we can get this, because this house is done, ready to go. I'm very pleased to help any way we can, and we have our responsibilities. And so as a councilman, as a council member, I have a certain amount of my, my, what's the word? Charity, that, but the money that we make the decisions with here as city councilman is not ours. It's not ours, it's the cities and the citizens. And so that's why we have a big responsibility to, I think a policy is a great, a great idea. So I would move to, if I, if you entertain a motion.
I have, I have other people that want to speak first. You're good? Are you good? Oh, you want to speak? Okay, wait a minute, let's see. Alex is good, Fariah's next, Mr. Silveira?
Ashley, what is the, what's, how time sensitive is it for, for you guys?
Well, we got an extension for the, the, the impact fees till May 5th, hoping that we would have a resolution. So I don't, I mean, we would like to sell the house, the sooner the better, but.
Are you, are you looking to close that, like, any, like?
Not any day now, I mean, we have.
An extension is part of this process that we want to go?
We weren't planning on closing before the 5th, but we were hoping to close very soon after that.
So the house is done?
Yeah, we're just doing the fencing and finishing up landscaping, so.
How bad the position does that put you guys into?
Every, I mean, every month, we, we aren't selling it, we are paying for it. So, I mean, with any developer, you know, it's better to kind of move the property. So, I mean, I would say the sooner the better, but we, of course, want to work with you guys if there's an option to, you know, waive or reduce or work it out in the, in the loan itself. We're interested, so.
Yeah, I like the idea of what they did in Gustine of, you know, putting that covenant on it, that if it's sold as private or to a for-profit, then it would be paid at that time. I would be fine moving, I think, look, and I think it's a worthy cause. I think it's, and I agree with Mr. Fariah, can't agree with the moron, you know, I'm not spending my money here, I'm spending the citizens of Los Banas' money. I think it's a worthy cause, I would be fine moving forward with it tonight. But I also would like, you know, obviously, I'm only one of five votes, and so I need, we need, we need consensus among the council, and if a policy helps to get us there, then I'm all for that. I just, it's something, I know we have budget time coming up. We are, later on in the meeting, we are going to agree or disagree to cancel the first meeting in May. So there's gonna be a lot of stuff on the plate. I know that we had healthy discussion at the last meeting of a, of a new ordinance to regulate stuff, and, and so there's a lot of stuff on, 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 on staff's plate right now. So I just would, A, is, could, could as part of this tonight, and if Mr. Fariah would like to put it into his motion, is, is granting you an extension on those, that, that extension on the fees until such time as we came up with a policy? And then I would need to ask staff, is, can we have a date certain that we would be able to vote on that policy? And that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you go to Mrs. Lewis?
I was just gonna say, there's, there is an option there in that I think the, the building that was chosen to have the impact fees was kind of arbitrarily chosen. I'm only guessing that because the house 541 is actually on the foundation of the other house that burnt down. So I don't know how they came, I mean, so I don't know if we could just like, put them on the other house so that we can close this one and carry on the conversation for the next house.
I can explain, it's because of the way that the lots were created. So the three lots that are the three units that face M Street were technically following somewhat the original lot lines. This was a brand-new lot created all by itself as a makeshift of makeover, a remainder pieces of the three lots, and that's why this got attached. This wasn't, this was a brand-new lot, and 545 was associated with the parcel that had the original unit on it. So that's, that's the history of why.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so in answer to Mr. Silveira's question, an extension?
So staff, the, the building official, and so staff does control the extension of occupancy, extension of that inspection. And this is the only outstanding item, so we have been waiting to resolve this issue. And so staff can grant that extension with a date certain.
Okay. All right, yeah. And, and you know, all my years in education, I learned, and this is basically a scholarship, it's, it's a grant, it's a, it's a, a waiver of fees, and if you have a fair process for everyone, then we're going to know our liabilities. And it's, it's, it's only good business to know that. So we could, like I said, we could be heroes tonight and goats tomorrow. And, and that's not the purpose of the five of us. To, to, to make sure that we're managing the city's money correctly. And I don't know what the solution's going to be. We have, you know, three different options right now. Pay, pay part, some kind of set number of monies that would be put forward on a one-year, two-year basis or whatever, or a, a regulation of rolling the fees into a fee deferment, but getting all the fees back. Are you, is that what you're saying, Mr. Fariah? Wait a minute, wait one minute, wait a minute. Let me find this thing. There we go.
My idea is that we simply, we spread the fees out over the length of the loan.
Correct, but getting the fees back that were due us.
Which is the way I got my education.
Yeah, yeah.
University of the Pacific, it's the only way it could happen.
Yeah.
So I, you know, that, that, they gave me a hand up, and I hopefully have been able to give it back in the same thing situation that I tried to hear. But that would be something, I know, I know Mrs. Lewis had some things to say before I make my motion.
Okay. Yeah, no, we're not through, we're not through. Okay, all right, let's go on, let's see, Mrs. Santos, you're next, and then Mrs. Lewis.
So for me, I would have to say I kind of fall between just absolutely loving what Habitat for Humanity does for, for people and just helping them out, and then also just setting a new precedence, at least for as far as this is concerned. I, I definitely know what it is like to be a family in need, so I mean, that's, my heart goes out for that because I, something like this would have definitely helped us in our time of need. But I, I do also like the fact that we can set, set some type of, get some type of document out there that would help us, guide us through these situations for the future. So I was, actually, I was, as Fariah was going through his numbers there, I was looking over it, over the possible 20-year loan, it would be 240 payments at 108 per month. And then if with a 30-year loan, it's 360 payments at $72 a month. So I would, for me, I would definitely be for, for hoping to spread that one out, but also, like, once we get a vote going here, I would like to hope that we can, so this doesn't, it's not a problem for you in the future, that, and for us as well, that we can get some type of document out there that does help with, with this in the future.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Ashley, I know that Councilman Fariah asked some specific questions about the loan. Based on the number of items that were donated for this particular project, is there, is there a difference in the cost of, you know, are you selling the, the house at exactly what it cost to build it, or is, is there any built-in dollars for Habitat in there?
Right. I mean, it really depends, but when it comes to Habitat houses, we like to kind of keep a fair value for them. So if, for instance, one person got pretty much everything donated, we can't reduce the price to, you know, the zero, you know? It would have to be kind of a fair market value for the house. So when people are making donations and, you know, it's to Habitat or however it works, we account for those. And for, you know, there would be maybe some reduction when it comes to, you know, higher-end items or something like that, if they got them donated. But the basic value of the house.
In this particular case, there were studs that were purchased for the home.
Right.
By people in the community.
Right.
There was an energy-efficient water heater donated, there's solar system that's being donated.
Right.
There was, I can't, I don't know the technical name for it, but for electrical car, the state of California requires that every new home.
Charging station.
Has that charging station in the home. I don't know what other items were donated, those are just some of the ones that I.
Right.
Knew about.
Yeah, no, we had some very generous donors in our community.
Very generous. And then you're carrying the loan for the 20, 30 years.
Yeah.
And it's at no interest. The, the question that, that I want our city attorney to also look at for us is, just, you know, by any chance, if there ends up being a default on the loan, you're in the first position for getting that home back and reselling it, but where does the city lie for the monies that we, we haven't collected on impact fees? You know, how, how do we fare out on that? I, you know, I, I participated in your program to help build, and I'm gonna participate in the one that's coming up. So I, I know that, you know, the city wants to be generous and, and make ways for everybody, but the bottom line is that we have to be a guardian of the monies that come in for the whole community. And as the mayor said, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna look like really generous, loving people today. But I guarantee you, if people who have Facebook go on there tomorrow, there're gonna be some angry people about, why are you giving these fees away and we had to pay the fee? Nobody made a way for me, I had to pay it all. We had the senior project over on Overland, and those people have really extensive fixed incomes. And I think that, you know, the highest rent over there is probably about 500 and some dollars a month, even though that company built that to, to make money. You know, I don't know how they're making a lot of money on a facility that they're charging such low rents on, other than the fact that they're probably getting grants and investments from outside people, which I understand. And, and that's what I would hope for Habitat, is that you guys begin to foster and get PG&E and other big companies to start helping you, just like they do in Fresno and other larger cities. I, I don't know if you've.
We do.
Looked at getting that help from those type of agencies. But getting to the point back to that senior project is that we couldn't afford to pass, to, to not charge them the impact fees. And when they had the ribbon cutting, some of our fire departments came out to celebrate with them. And I asked our officers, have you guys been out here? Yeah, we've been out here a lot. So the impact fee, even though it may seem to be unfair or, or a lot of money for a single-resident home, we all enjoy those services. I can't tell you the number of times the ambulance and police are rolling down my street at least two to three times a week, providing services to people in our community. There was a situation not long ago where someone coded, and everyone went out to make sure that that person was safe. And that's important to me. But if we don't have the fees to be able to keep and maintain and hire qualified people to give the services that your new resident may need, that you may need, that I may need, then we're gonna be at jeopardy. I'm, I'm not saying that the city shouldn't be generous, but I'm saying that, you know, for myself, I think we need to be careful about setting these kind of precedents when it comes to using general fund money. We've used money from various grants and from RDA, I think Stacy has already brought that up, the mayor's already said it. And if we had those funds, I'd say, yes, that would be an excellent way of trying to help people in our community. But when you start taking away from general fund money that provides necessary services to the people in the community, then you put a city at risk, especially a small city that has limited funds, and you've got state mandates that are coming down on us, known and unknown. Some of them we know now, some of them we don't know.
Right.
But they're always coming down. So I, I just want to precaution this council about what we're mandated to do with the tax dollars and the sales tax dollars that come in to this community as far as providing services, mandated services to our community. And everybody should be responsible to take a part in that, not just some. All of us need to be responsible to take a part in that. And when, when. And when I look at this $25,000 over the amortization of 30 years, I'm just taking 30 years, that's $84 a year for this loan, this fee.
A month.
A month.
No, it's a year, because I'm looking at the 30-year loan. Well, I calculated as, well, maybe it is 84 a month, but I thought it was a-
And you guys have a great point. I mean, with the police and fire, like, $3,500 is a lot different to, you know, than $25,000.
We can, we'll all sub here and say it's a wonderful program. And I know it is, because when you first started, and I was working at Home Depot in San Jose when I was still fully employed and I was working two jobs, I asked the store that I worked at in San Jose to give products for the first Habitat house that was built here. And I got a lot of flack from my store manager because it wasn't in the San Jose district. But I pressed him because I felt it was important enough. And they gave that, those products to me to be able to donate to Habitat. So, you know, if the council decides they want to, you know, review this or get back to Habitat and come up with a policy, I'll, you know, I'll go along with it. But I'm very, very concerned about the city being a gift giver of this kind of money to any organization outside of the mandates that we have to do. If we were floating in a lot of money, maybe that might be okay. But, you know, again, I want to know from our city attorney where we stand if something happens to this loan and you are the first right, where do we stand as a person that's given $25,000 that we may not be able to collect? Yeah. So that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, along that lines, I think if something is done, we want to help out, to spread out the money to give a little bit here and a little bit there, if that's the case. And there are all these different options that we talked about. And the deferral, the partial, the full, the, but I don't know what the laws are governing that. I have no idea. And I have no idea what the liability is. And I have no idea how many people could come after us and ask us and demand those funds.
There are lots of examples of other municipalities that have done it. So, I mean, Gustine is our neighbor that is one that has an example, so.
Yeah. And I need to know how many homes they build as compared to how many we build. Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, deferrals are common, partial waivers are common. They're managed a number of different ways. It depends on, there's land use covenants that go along with it, there's affordability covenants. I'm not, I don't know much about habitats. I don't know what your affordability requirements are. So there's a lot of different ways to do it. It goes back to the question of, how much do you want to do in terms of your whole impact fee program in terms of not collecting? So there are ways, yeah, that's very common. And it's a common for affordable housing projects. It's common for when you want a big commercial development to come into town. It's common to give impact fee deferrals and waivers like that in exchange for our property tax and sales tax. So I don't think it's a legality question as much as, I think it is important to have a policy so that the next person is treated the same way or everyone knows what the rules are, like you said. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's brain surgery. I don't think it's going to, it would take a long time to come up with a policy as to how it would work for residential development, for instance. So I would think you could entertain this potentially. We're really busy right now. Potentially, you could entertain it at the second meeting in May, again.
I'll be there.
That would be also a commitment with Ashley to meet with us to see what's acceptable, what's affordable, you know, those kinds of things. We don't want to promulgate a bunch of policies and rules that nobody can fit into either.
So to me, it's kind of an application process, too. And who's going to make the decision on who's the most need and what the need should be?
Some municipalities have a cap on the amount that they will do in a 12-month period, for instance. So you do it that way. Or they have like affordability covenants, and if the property transfers, the city gets paid all at one time. There's a lot of different ways to do it.
No, I mean what names she'd want to bring forward or Habitat would want to bring forward for possible help. So, yeah, so, okay.
So if Stacy thinks she can work on this.
I'm going to go to our city manager for a minute, because I see a, okay.
Just to follow up in that, the second meeting in May, that may be overly optimistic. We could shoot for that, but I think it might be safer to bring it back at that first meeting in June. We could certainly work towards that if we had, definitely have our commitment to sit down and try and work through these issues. But that second meeting in May might be overly optimistic.
Okay, all right. Mr. Silveira.
Actually, the city attorney kind of answered my questions when he's back there, when he came back on, so I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lewis, you're good or more? Okay, let's see, Mr. Vaughn, you're good. Mr. Freya.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to give direction to staff, continue this item to either the May 16th meeting ideally, or if we can't make the May 16th meeting, the first meeting in June, which, what is it, the second or third, whatever it is. And also to include in that an extension for this fee from Habitat and for our staff to examine the various approaches and to helping with this. I like the deferral idea, others may like the reduced idea. Those ideas will all be discussed in that. And our city attorney and our staff will work together to bring a good resolution to benefit everyone and to get a policy in place so we never have, so we never have to worry about, have any doubt again. We come to the city council and say, we're going to build this house. We don't have any doubt. We know this is how it's going to be. And that's really the way we need to work in a city. So that would be my motion.
Okay. Did you repeat that? No, I'm just kidding.
I can.
Do I have a second? Pardon me? Oh, Mrs. Santos. Wait a minute, let me go through this thing here. Okay, I'm just, hang on. All right. Try that.
I second that.
Okay. It's been motioned by Freya, as stated by Freya, that I won't repeat, and is second by Mrs. Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if it's okay with everyone, I want to call a five or 10-minute break here.
Do we have that much left on the agenda? Oh, there ain't a dozen.
Okay, we're back. Item number 10, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 5951, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, RMRA, proposed project list for fiscal year 2018-2019. And we're going to go to our Public Works Director, Mr. Faiton.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Tonight, we're looking for a recommendation to, our recommendation would be to adopt Resolution Number 5951, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account proposed project list for fiscal year 2018-2019. This is, it's the RMRA, and we, I think we all know it better as SB1, Senate Bill Number 1. It's the money that came down for rehabilitation, basic road maintenance. And the timetable for this is, is the current timetable, it may change as it goes on. Every May 1st, we have to get our list for the next fiscal year to the California Transportation Commission, and they record that, and that's the projects we're supposed to be working on. And at the end of every June of every year, we put together the project list and we have to report that project list by October of 2018. And that's the reporting mechanism. So this is SB1, and to be eligible, like I said, cities and counties need to have an annual list. And our annual list is based on our pavement management system, which will be updated before the next list. But currently, we use our manual one that we've been using for a while. So it's based on the pavement management system. This year's list has a total of, I believe it's in the, it's about 800 and 1/2. list has a total of, I believe it's in the, it's about $810,000 of work on it. We, SB1 is estimated only to bring in about $709,000. Looks like it'll be more than that. So we do, our list is more than what we are estimated to get, because if we do get more funds, then we'll have projects to, to work on. The list is basically three different types of projects. One is fog sealing, and that's putting the oil on the streets to re-oil the streets to make them not brittle, to make them last longer. It's not a structural element, it is a lubricant element to make the streets last longer. And that's followed by, after fog sealing, we crack seal. Two reasons. The cracks are oiled up, they're ready to receive the crack seal better, and actually, they show up better. So that's why the crack seal does follow the fog seal in this particular, in this circumstance. The only, the only time that is not true is, of course, is when they overlay, because you can't crack over the overlay. You do that before. There was one other, and I think it's only two projects that are included in the cold mix overlays. They are actual overlays of the street using asphalt that isn't at the exact, the, as high a temperature as the hot asphalt mix that you normally see that goes through the, the large machine. This is still hot asphalt, asphalt that's delivered by trucks. Our staff can do it with graders and, and compactors and rollers. You don't need to hire anybody. So you get, the economic benefit of that is you, your staff does it. So it is cheaper on the labor part of it, and it gives you about a 10 to 20-year window of useful life, probably 15 to 20, actually. You'll have areas that may, that may fail and you have to repair, but usually, it's a 15-year life. So those are the projects that were listed here, and to put in our budget. And, and as you know, what we use, the SB1 funds is, in the past, we've been, we've been negative spending in the streets, in the streets. We've been going from quite a bit above $2 million down to about $2 million. And this replaces some of those funds that we were getting less of in the gas tax. And so now, it sort of just fills in that gap, where we can still have about the $2 million reserve each year, and still have these, this majority of projects going along. So it's, it's really a good thing for our rehabilitation. And I know there was one question that I'd like to answer maybe before it's even asked. On one of the cold mix overlays, it was Center Avenue from Cardoza Road to the city limits south. The city limits south, if you drive the street, currently, there is a subdivision being graded out there, and at the edge of the grading on the east side is the city limit line. And what this cold mix is, this would be for the center two lanes, because that subdivision is responsible for the lanes along their subdivision, of course. And actually, they're responsible for the curb and gutter along the cemetery, too. That's one of their conditions. And to let you also know about this, from the highway along Center to Cardoza is actually going to be a Measure V local project. So we're not gonna just keep a portion of that street not done. We have a different project for that, a different funding source later. So we're just not doing part of it. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
Mark, what's the, the formula for the overlay on I Street that we did all those years ago, and it still looks great?
The formula?
Yeah, or, or what do they use? I mean, 'cause that, you know, I mean, everyone thought that was all gonna crack and just look, we did it from, from Fifth to Seventh.
Yeah, I, I remember when we did it, and I'd have to check to see if there was petromat involved in that. That's my, that might be why you're not cracking, we're not.
Because it's held up really well.
It was right when I came here. I think there might have been petromat, but I'll take a look at that. It, it would be the same asphalt that we'd use anywhere else. There's open grade or refined grade, and I'll find out which one it was for that. But I think there was a petromat layer put under that to stabilize it, but I'll have to check. That's usually what happens when they last that nicely.
Yeah, because I mean, I mean, you know, there are no cracks. Everything just looks good all those years later.
And that's usually a sign, that's a sign of not a really good surface. It's a sign of what they did before they paved it. Like when they went in, and you remember, they potholed areas, they took areas out, and they re-levelled them out and put some base course in there. It's a sign of that being really done well. That's what it's a sign of. Like what you see on Place Road in, around Home Depot, that's a sign of very bad base work, is what that is. Which is on our, we're gonna design it, we're doing it. So I tell everybody, it's there.
Well, do what you did on, on I Street, because it looks great 10 years later.
It, it, it has done pretty well. And to give you an example, because people wonder about the cold mix, over in what we, what we call the presence area, where we're looking at that sidewalk project over by the hospital, all those streets that we recently did in the last three years, that was cold mix. When you saw our staff out there with the graders, and they, that was a cold mix project. It does, it does give you a little rougher course of a finish, but it goes a long way, though, economically. You get a few streets like that that are looking really nice.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Mark, could you, excuse me, go over the, the cold mix overlay again for Center Avenue from Cardoza Road to the city limits south? Now, at, at Cardoza Road going south, which takes you to Pioneer, there is development going on there. So the east side of that road is considered city limits at this point, up to, how does this work since there's development going on there?
Actually, the city limits, they annex the entire street.
Okay.
So if you go up to where, where the grading stops is actually the city limit line on the east, but that takes in the entire street. We don't take in partial streets anymore when we annex.
When you say the grading, grading where?
You know, the earthwork that they're doing out there. Right at the limit where the orchard starts, and the grading, and the, and the earthwork is starting, that is, that's the limit line right there. And when we take in annexations, and I think this is true, when we take in annexations, we take in the entire street right away. We don't wanna split the street between county and city. Jurisdiction problems are all kinds.
Right, right. So since the development is going on, why are we doing an overlay there?
Because we're doing the existing, the existing two lanes. The middle two lanes are ours. Their responsibility is the, their travel lane, their curb and gutter, their sidewalk. Because of the nature of street, if they happen to come in and they actually overlaid that for us, we'd have to reimburse them those center two lanes. So either way, we're gonna get a new street out there, and if they beat us to the punch, and they're willing to work with us on that, we may have them overlay it and just pay it, pay it to them. Because that's one of the things the traffic impact fee covers. But that, that's the reason. And as they get down to the cemetery, what you'll see, you'll see both, they were required to do their normal frontage improvements, which is the, whatever you call it, the travel lane in front of their property, the bike lane, curb and gutter, sidewalk. But they were also required to put in the other side along the cemetery, including sidewalk. So that whole street will be done. And then when you get past the cemetery heading south, it'll go back to a three-quarter street, and the two lanes will be ours in this overlay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mrs. Silveira?
Mark, I'm going to vote to approve this tonight, but I just wanted to make you a comment. I shared this with Alex earlier. I've been out and about a lot lately, and it's really interesting to me is, if you get outside the unincorporate, into the unincorporated areas of the county, and into any other, those Dos Palaces, the other city within our, our district here, number one issue is roads, by far. But within the city limits of Los Banas, very seldom do I hear anybody complain about their, about their roads and streets. So I always have appreciated our, our efforts in, in the maintenance of our streets, the, the, the fog seals, the chip seals. And I know, I don't know what the timeline is. I think it's between every five to 10 years. They, every neighborhood, every street gets, gets some kind of action, you will, some kind of maintenance, which just extends the useful life, life of our street. So I, I wanna commend you and staff on that. I think that's, it's, and it's very evident, because I'm talking, you literally, you go to, you go to any, any area outside of the unincorporated areas, and it's a huge issue. But within the city limits, it's not. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I have a fantastic street division. Greg Pimentel was here, and he's, lives and dies for streets, and he knows it so much better than I do. But one thing that I will tell you, you know, I just can't wait till we get past the design stages and start putting it in, because the drought and the wet weather has, has caused problems in the basement, I'll be honest with you. So we're, we're going forward, and after we get past this design, you will see a lot of action out there again.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Lewis?
I already spoke.
Oh, you did? Well, Mr. Freya?
You said the drought and the wet weather? Is it because, because we had the drought, and then it got really wet? Or do they each have their own set of problems?
Well, it's not as bad as a little bit of clay, obviously, you know about that. And you started to seal the moisture. The moisture content was just changing so much underneath, underneath the streets, and they were heaving so much, which isn't heaving a lot, would only be a quarter inch, but up and down, that's a lot. And that's what you see, even in the, go to some of the new subdivisions that don't have homes in them, and brand-new pavement, hasn't been driven on, the oil hasn't been, they're cracking. So it's, it's, even brand-new infrastructure needs, has shown some of that effect.
Slingshot effect.
And, you know, we'll get it out there, and we'll try to keep, I know we have that reputation in the county, we wanna keep it.
Yes, thank you. And glad you mentioned Place Road there behind Home Depot. That thing is.
Yes, that's terrible, I know.
Oh, my God.
Well, I know where you live, I know what the manager lives. No, we get a lot.
Yeah. Well, the problem is, the problem is, so many people use that, so many people use that to go in and out of Home Depot.
Yeah.
To bypass Pacheco, they go across scripts of place.
Yeah, also remember, and Stacy was kind enough to recall that, that was annexed into the city, it was a county street. It's sort of like Pioneer gets annexed in. We're gonna take.
We inherited it when, when they built Home Depot?
When we annexed, yeah. So, and it was, same thing will happen with Pioneer, and hopefully, we'll get that Pioneer project going in the next five years, at least in the design stage. The county streets, by the time we get them, aren't in the best shape. It's just, they have, they have a lot of streets to work on, that's.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions? All right, let's go with Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5951, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, RMRA, proposed project list for fiscal year 1819.
Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5951. It's read by title. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item 11, industrial recruitment presentation. Poor young lady's been waiting all night. All right, let me get you an introduction here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Director Elms?
You can shut me off at any time.
Okay.
So, Chabon Concepts, who has prepared an industrial recruitment tactical plan, which analyzes and develops a strategy to attract specific industries to Los Banas. And really, this is a continued effort from what we're doing with retail recruitment. We're seeing the, the positive benefits to that proactive approach to economic development. And just Alex and I discussing, okay, well, what can we do to encourage and attract industry to Los Banas? So we partnered with Chabon, Audrey's the president and CEO of Chabon Concepts, and it's really been an asset to the city of Los Banas, even just from today. We spent some time working with Paluso Cheese, the owner of Paluso Cheese, on, and finding various resources to help them on new projects that they're working on. And Audrey was very helpful in, in partnering with the city and also Paluso for a Cal Competes tax credit for Paluso Cheese. It's a, it's a grant application with the governor's office of the state of California. So this is just a part of our extended economic development efforts and our partnership with Chabon, and I'm gonna turn it over to Audrey Taylor.
Is this working on the new site?
Yes, that's a part of that, the new site.
Okay. All right. Do you have a presentation?
I do have a presentation.
All right, let me punch all these buttons here. And there you go. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it. I'm Audrey Taylor. I'm president of Chabon Concepts, Chico, California. So it's interesting, come a long way, stay, stay the last and the night. So hopefully, this will be really great. We're focusing tonight on this industrial recruitment, which is really about, how do you attract job-creating and goods-producing businesses to the city? You want those types of businesses to really stimulate your economy more. But also, it is probably one of the most competitive fields there is. All cities, no matter where, are trying to recruit businesses that create jobs and create goods and services that go outside of the area to stimulate your economy. So it's very competitive. Not that, say, retail isn't, but retail is very different in the fact that when you're doing the recruitment for retail, they have a formula. They're really looking at, you know, what's the demographics of your area, what's the buying power in the area, and they make a decision. So you can see a McDonald's here, and you can probably see it down the road, and, and things like that. So their decision process is much different than a business making millions of dollars of investment in your community, it can be, where they're gonna hire people. And their decision factors are often about their supply chain, or who their market is, you know, not the same types of things, which is difficult. There's some rules of thumb in, in industrial recruitment that I wanna kind of share with you about any jobs that are actually creating, or any businesses that are creating jobs. So 50 to 60% of job creation will be created by your existing businesses that are already here. Okay? So we always call that the nudge factor, 'cause you never see it. It's never the, oh, this business moved into town, and they're creating 50 jobs. It's, that business created two or three jobs every year. But over time, they're creating jobs, they're hiring people at higher-than-average wages, typically living wages. And they're also increasing the goods that they're producing that are going outside of the area, creating taxes that are coming back in, and more money that's coming back in. So when you think about the industrial recruitment side of it, even though it should be part of your program, you know, which is, and it's probably the toughest part of your program, because it's so competitive, those jobs that you wanna create will probably, at least 50 or 60% will come from the existing. So always watching those existing, and that's what we were doing today, is really talking about the existing. And we have a meeting tomorrow with another company. 70% of bald businesses that are looking to relocate or to expand into a community are, are looking for an existing facility already, and they want one that's probably newer. They're not looking for land. Okay? So they're typically looking for a building when they come in. They may settle for land, but they're typically looking for a building. Also, 70% that are looking are typically within 100 or 150 miles of where you are right now. Those are the ones that have the, they kind of understand the area, they'll probably kind of take a look at the area. The other 30% may be moving in from another state. They could be from a metro area where they're expanding. So they may have a facility in LA, and they say, okay, I wanna be closer to the Bay Area. Where should I look? And, you know, who's on the radar screen in that case? Also, in an active location process, where you're dealing with the company and the owner, or the corporation, or the headquarters, or whoever they've selected to do that location analysis, could take anywhere from 18 to 36 months. And I'll tell you, I've been in this business for a long time, probably one out of 35 that you deal with actually locates. So to me, this business is about, how many frogs can you kiss before you find the prince? You know, it's, it's a lot of work. When you start thinking about marketing a city to businesses that are job-creating and goods-producing, you're really, the first thing you have to look at is, okay, what do we have to market? So what is our industrial inventory? You know, what kind of sites and buildings do we have? What kind of land do we have? And in this case, we've been looking over in the northwest industrial area, which is very nice area, and you have some good little companies there. You have some mixed uses over there. You'd like to see some more industrial over there comparatively. But the spaces are really small. So that's going to limit the type of companies that are gonna look there. Now, that may currently be the demand that you're getting, you know, is for the smaller spaces, 2,500, 3,000. But what's missing in the marketplace for you to market, to try to attract businesses, is anything in the 10,000 square foot, or the 25,000 square foot, or something that you can divide into that, that they can look at and say, okay, hey, they already have product, because you're competing with areas who have product already in, in this marketplace. So the size of buildings and/or land that you have really kind of directs the types of companies that you can look for. You know, that's one of the things. So even in your land inventory that you have, you have small sites, and I think the biggest site that we saw was the nine acres. So again, pretty small for looking for, for industry. But you, you use what you have, you know? And this is a great little industrial park, so you do. So looking at the types of businesses that you wanna look for, because of your location, you can do what we call a geographic targeting. Okay? So where is the nearest metrop- Okay, so where is the nearest metropolitan area where businesses are being pushed out of? So a lot of times, businesses don't make a decision that I want to move, you know, unless they're truly expanding. But they could be being pushed out of an area because their lease is up, and they know, and this is happening in the Bay Area all the time, so someone is, you know, their lease is up, but they know they can get a higher rent for it, they could tear the building down, they can have, they can get more money out of it. So they're actually pushing those companies out. And I recently worked on a, a site location where a company was looking for a site, very sizable company too, that actually went into one city in the Bay Area, and the city said, I'm sorry, we don't want your type of company. And in, with, in food processing, you know, and not, not a wastewater user. So, you know, they're wanting the technology. So as, as those demographics of businesses change in a geographic area, it opens opportunities, uh, for them to look to other areas. So key for here is kind of, all right, yes, we can look geographically, and could probably look at the Bay Area and say that might be one of our target geographic areas, as well as some other areas in a circumference of a hundred miles, a hundred and fifty miles. Company size and ownership will be really important for you to take a look at when you're targeting what type of businesses. So a fit here, and if you just look around of the businesses that you have, well, probably what we call independent owners or owner-operators of their company. And they're making an executive decision that they want to move the company. Dealing with a corporate decision is a whole nother world, you know, and they often, you know, um, probably you wouldn't even make it on the radar screen, you know, probably because of the size of the land that you have. So they're just harder to deal with because someone else is making the decision, not the owner, is not making a decision that they want to be here. So we would recommend that you look for companies that are probably under fifty employees, maybe around the twenty employee size, that have the propensity to, to grow, so that they're growing here and employing people, and that they be owner-operator, you know? And those can be sizable companies, they'll probably have revenues anywhere in the, you know, ten million to twenty million, uh, and again, they could be startups too. In this area, the industrial companies that are probably the best fits are those that are kind of in the metal fabrication types of businesses, really important, you have a good workforce that, that matches those. Artisan foods, and, and again, like Paluso Cheese that we're dealing with, there's a lot of those companies that are starting up now that will be growing, and they'll grow and then they'll be acquired by other companies. But those are a great target for this area, because that's what you're known for. And of course, closer out to I five distribution makes, makes sense out there. So we always work on what's your business case, you know, what's the business case? Why would a business want to be here? So what's the value proposition that you offer a business, and why should they be here? Well, your top ones are, of course, are your location, your workforce, and cost. So you're in the valley, is that any different than anybody else? No. So what you, what you'll want to do is kind of differentiate your value proposition from other people, so that you get remembered. So we have a couple of suggestions of maybe strengthening that business case. And you have a strong business case of your location and of the workforce and, and of cost, and you can show that to a client why they should be here. But a couple of things that you could do, because you don't have any, you know, basically spec buildings up, and hardly anybody has any spec buildings up, um, you could do a virtual building program. And that's really working with property owners, and you actually put a building on paper, so that the client can see that this building can go on this piece of ground and could be built in a certain amount of time, so that they understand the timeline. Number of cities have done that, it's very effective, because it's hard, particularly for an owner-operator company, to kind of visualize what a building would look like if you don't have one to show them. And they often will move on if you don't have that. Partnering with banks, actually packaging how you could help a business even buy their building. So what happens a lot of times if companies are moving from another metropolitan area, they've been leasing their building for a long time, particularly in the industrial side of it. Uh, but we have some SBA programs out there that can really, are very attractive for a company to actually acquire their own building if you have it for sale. So bringing those tools together is part of your package. The one thing that I think the city of Los Banos does very, very well is facilitating companies. Stacy has done a great job just working with her and seeing her work with businesses, of how she brings the resources together, um, with working with the businesses and helping facilitate with that business what they don't know. And how they can tie into services that are around. I mean, our, our meeting today was excellent, you know, with a company about, gee, I didn't know you did that. You know, your work net here will actually be, and do all the recruitment and hiring and be the H R department, right? The handbook, right, the, the job descriptions, that's unheard of, you know, so that, that's a great service to that. And it's all about bringing it together, somebody that handholds the company when they go through this. Because these guys at companies probably only do this once or twice. They don't do it all the time, they're not used to this, so it's very new to them. So being that strong facilitator and something to market is really good. The last piece is, okay, how do we do this? What's the marketing tactics if we wanted to get into this? And again, gonna caution you that going into industrial recruitment is very competitive, it's very long-term, and so you have to be very strategic. And I recommend for small cities, you're kind of a very gorilla about what you do, you know, so you think of gorilla marketing. But you may strengthen the case a little bit about what you're doing, and you can think about that, again, that's, that's long-term, of how do you package yourself? Uh, and when you're going out to the client, so you know what you're selling, and that it's different than anybody else, that's just not another valley town coming and talking to them. It's really critical to build what we call a target list, those companies that you want to go after, and you can buy list of businesses. But before even buying a list of businesses, it's all about working with the brokers, you know, because most businesses will go to a broker before they go to anybody else. So just getting the brokers to understand what your value proposition is and what the business case is will be very important, it's just doing that outreach to them. Then kind of scheduling messaging, um, and we haven't got into talking about, you know, critical messaging, but messaging is really important to keep you on the radar screen with companies that may be looking. And so that people know that you're out there, you know, right now, you're probably not out there in a great, great way. But you want to do it very strategically with your messaging. Schedule calls and personal visits, and again, this would take staff time, so you have to really kind of think about this. But it's really important to get in front of, uh, particularly brokers and get personal relationships with them. And then also just to keep targeting companies and seeing if you can get meetings with them. Always a hard thing to do, again, it's the, how many frogs can you kiss before you get a prince that's gonna answer your call? It's sales. And then collaborating with marketing partners, you have the county, uh, you have a Central Valley Group, um, you have Team California, they all do different types of trade shows. But it's not about going to every trade show or every conference where there might be businesses, it's really about those that fit the type of businesses that you're looking for. Because you can go to a lot of them, but you may never come back with a lead, you know, in that process. So you, you know, it's, it's good to kind of work your own marketing list and go with others just to see what the market is and get your exposure out there, because it usually, you can leverage your dollars if you're going to do that. So the industrial recruitment, you know, I think it's something that you have to add to your portfolio for your economic development, you've been doing it, but I think this is really about being a little bit more strategic, a little bit more focused with the, uh, industrial area that you have. How do we really promote that business case that we have and start targeting some businesses? So I'll open it for questions.
Well, I'm happy to hear that, uh, um, things are going well with the, uh, the cheese factory, and if that comes to fruition, that's gonna be a huge shot in the arm for all of us.
You'd be very happy with that one.
Yeah, very happy. So, so all the parts of the city, and you play, thank you so much for what you do, both of you.
Absolutely.
All of you.
It's a great team to work with, yeah.
All right, let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
Yes, Audrey, um, I noticed in the staff report that you, um, you evaluated some property out there, um, like phase one, phase two, phase three. I'm guessing that's of the industrial park out on, uh, one fifty-two, closer to, uh, Interstate five? Did you, uh, did you ever look at the property at one sixty-five and I five?
Oh, the original one?
With Dawn, uh, it, it, Dawn's opinion was that I five and one fifty-two was, was primary.
For the, yeah, for the, yeah. So there's been, been two times, we, we actually did an assessment when we were working for the county during their SEDs, so we took a look at it twice. And this, this one is focused mainly on the northwest industrial for the marketing piece of it, but we did look out there. A site selector joined us on our, our trip and looked at, at all the land. And anything nearer the I five, you know, just begs to be opened up for industrial. And I think we made that first recommendation almost three years ago.
In the SEDs process.
Yeah, during the SEDs process, yes.
You made the first recommendation, I five, one sixty-five, or I five, one fifty-two?
Just an I five distribution, a mega industrial business park.
Yeah.
Okay, and so in your opinion, it does one, one is better than yet, the, the one fifty-two and I five is better than the?
I think we liked the one fifty-two better.
Yeah, the site selector. Because of the access and the closer proximity to city infrastructure and resources was what was identified as, uh, outweighing, you know, balancing the various, um, options that outweighed, um, you know, the two sites.
Yeah, the, the other one had a lot of infrastructure needs, you know, nice site.
Good visibility.
Good visibility, everything like that, but the, the build would probably be very expensive.
Got you. And so then, now, this is the first step in this process, you've identified, I'm gonna say, our weaknesses and our strengths, and then the next step in the process is you help us to try to, uh, strengthen our weaknesses? Is that, is that what the, how this works?
I think, you know, I don't see that, that you really have weaknesses, you know? I think when you're looking at doing business attraction around manufacturing, industrial recruitment, any goods producing type companies, it's really about the value proposition. And I think just those few things that we talked about, because you, you just have to differentiate yourself from any other valley town that is targeting similar type, types of companies. Now, other communities, you know, Merced, uh, Modesto, and either, probably gonna go after larger ones than you're looking for. So you're kind of picking a niche to kind of take a look at, but you want to have a strong value proposition. I mean, when you talk to that business, you want to be able to say, you know, hey, you know, why should I move there? You want that answer, you know, for them. So I wouldn't say we did a, a full SWAT, uh, which are, which is what you're asking about.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Faria.
How important is, have you found in this industrial development is rail access?
Well, for the size of companies in the area that we're looking at, you know, probably not, you know, when you get into the bigger users, a rail can be a real advantage. We kind of turned that around, is if you have rail, you know, what is the product that you have around it? What's the real estate and the inventory that you have around it? And how can we make the business case, again, for that to be a location for a certain type of company? So, you know, that would be an asset that you would have, if you had rail with a spur, you know, then, then you have an asset that, that you could use.
Okay. But we do have some rail, of course, coming into the business park, which you saw, which is the small.
Yes.
Small businesses there.
Yeah.
So to, if we were gonna look at something bigger, then we'd need some kind of a big rail spur to deal with that, or like the.
Yeah, it, it, and it depends on the companies, you know, I mean, so many of the companies now are not using rail, I mean, I've seen rail taken out of a lot of areas, so, yeah, there's so much is transported.
Trucks.
You know, yeah, it depends on where their supply chain is.
Okay.
And where they're bringing their supply from, and how much supply, you know, and often, uh, you know, a rail company itself will not talk to a company unless they're doing, you know, twenty or thirty, you know, train loads coming in a day, yeah. And rail spurs, I mean, they're very expensive with the switches and things like that, I don't know what a switch costs anymore, but it's very expensive to do that. But, you know, given that there is enough types of industry to, to look for, I don't think you have to look for those that are doing that. Again, if you, if you have a site that's large enough and it has rail already, then you market it. Yeah. Don't worry, and if you don't have it, don't worry about it.
But our little industrial park sites aren't really big enough.
Not, yeah.
That the rail doesn't make any difference.
No, not at all, not for the types of companies you'd be looking for.
Okay, I guess, my father's prediction forty years ago seems to be coming true. When I was a little kid, my dad was a truck driver, and, uh, he said trucks will take over transportation. He said, because you can go point to point.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about transporting. So, uh, that's, it's interesting to see how important rail is when it once was very important. Of course, with the big canneries out there, we see those are huge, huge amounts of product, and so you need the, the rail in and out of there. But for our, our purposes, rail's not, not really a concern.
Unless you had a larger user, yeah.
Okay, and of course, now, another subject, um, I imagine you, you saw the old, the old Creamery, right? The old big brick building?
Yes, yes.
It needs, it probably needs seismic retrofit, um, and so that would be the big cost there, but it's got the, it's got size. It's got size and interesting location.
Yeah.
Parking challenges.
Multi-uses, yeah. Yeah. Large.
Break it down into bite sizes, but I know the site selector, he.
He shied away from it.
Yeah, a brew pub, though, it's just a really cool building, and it always kind of brings you back to, it'd be a really cool.
Oh, a restaurant, like I always say, a restaurant on top of there, it's the tallest building in town.
Yeah.
So if you could, you had some kind of.
So with repurposing buildings, it's really important, I mean, you have to do deeper analysis into a building than, than what we looked at, because there were so many variables in a building and repurposing a building. And part of it is driven by your market itself. And I know that Dawn looked at that one and immediately came to the fact that, you know, a brew pub, uh, you know, makes sense, you know, because of its location.
Right.
Yeah. And often brew pubs now are, are brewing small batches and they're going to the marketplace, so they're acting as a manufacturer as well as, as a pub. So really thinking outside of the box, and that's kind of a different type of process, is when you think of, um, again, you always start with the product that you have. So here you have your northwest industrial area, you have your downtown, and then you have specific buildings. And really thinking through each of those, of what are the different uses that we can have that complement where the location is, and what, what can we support if it gets here? It, it's almost like a, a one-by-one that you do, and that's a, that's a different strategy, and that would be like your next step that you would do after this one.
Brew, a brewing facility is kind of like that, kind of halfway between the, the retail type and, and the industrial, it's.
Right.
Kind of a mixed.
You're doing a mixed use.
It's kind of a, it's, it's like, uh, between the two there, so, uh, very good. Uh, and of course, we have, the highways are a big advantage.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's a huge advantage for, for supply chain.
Yeah, and market access, you know, your location, you know, your market access is, is really critical. And there, there are, particularly when we talk about the industrial, you know, along one fifty-two and close, closer to I five, there's a lot more businesses that are gonna be coming that are looking at the I five corridor. You know, I mean, that, that, that will happen, you know, you, you have it happening on both sides of you right now, you know, so you have it happening up in Patterson, and Tohone Ranch is starting to really pick up. And so what will happen eventually is they'll start looking here, and it's about being ready when those start looking, because those are gonna be site selectors or major brokers that are looking in the area for that type of location.
Thank you.
When we go to, um, to different, uh, businesses, like ICSC, and, uh, and the three of us attended, uh, everyone wants to talk to us when we tell them there's forty thousand cars going through town today. And I think that, that is kind of the key to, uh, to pulling in business in our community, because it's, it's a built-in advertisement. And, uh, and, and we need to, to capitalize somehow on that, because right now, traffic's not gonna get any better. And so they have a, a built-in, uh, a, a, a built-in place that, that they know that they're gonna get the exposure in this community.
Particularly for retail.
Yes.
Yeah, retail is really about rooftops and traffic counts.
Yes.
You know, I mean, that's, that's what they're looking for. Industrial, not so much.
Not so much, because you want it out of the way.
But they want that access, and that's, that's the piece that you have, is you have good access, and you have good access to major markets. So you're not that far off of I five, you know, so distribution from here, you know, into San Francisco, you can do within a day, and that's extremely important. So that location that you have is, is really good, and the, and the access. So that location that you have is, is really good and the, and the access that you have. Also, you have a workforce that's actually commuting. So you have a workforce that maybe is unemployed, you know, and usually businesses don't really look at your unemployment number. They're looking at those that are employed and what's the skill levels of those. So you do have a lot of people that are commuting, you know, and they're commuting out in different ways.
16,000.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's, that's a positive because all of a sudden now the business is saying, okay, there is a workforce right there that typically that workforce would like to work closer to home if they could, you know. So that, that again is another positive.
See, they don't attribute Los Banas to having a skilled workforce, but the skilled workforce, yeah, it's not in Los Banas, it goes out every day.
Yes.
But they would love to stay here.
Yes.
When I was hiring teachers, they would have loved to stay here.
Yes.
And, and so it's, it's the same thing. There is, is a huge skilled workforce in Los Banas. Okay, Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I was looking at on page six of the report, and it was talking about the opportunities. I thought there were some very good ones there, and I thought an interesting one was the, the catalyst project for downtown, helping incentivizing the brewing, the brewing to move, brewing company move downtown. Is that similar to the?
Yes, that's what we were just talking about, yeah. So there, when we did our site tour, we always start with a, a site tour and come to the community. And joining me on that site tour was Dawn Sheldon, and he is an international site consultant. So he usually works for corporations, usually manufacturers, that are looking to locate someplace. And he's from Cleveland, Ohio. And so he was giving through his eyes, his perspective of the types of businesses. And so we were looking at the industrial areas, but we were also looking at downtowns because that's part of any time a business comes, they don't just look at the site and where they're going to look at, they're going to look at the whole town. So he was trying to give feedback of, you know, okay, you have empty buildings, how do you fill them? You know, what makes sense for those types of things? And what do communities and businesses, what do they look for when, when they're coming to your community? You know, how is it vibrant? Does it have a few of the things that, you know, the metro areas have, you know, brew pub is important.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty good, especially we, there's been a lot of mention of here at the council and just around the city, of course, for just revitalizing the downtown area.
Yes.
And I know this is slightly off, but it's.
Yeah, and we just did a cursory of, of the downtown, and Stacy was kind enough to show us, you know, what was going on and, and things like that. But we normally look at, at residential areas, and we do that on our own and just to kind of look at what the housing stock is, you know, try to look at all those things that a business would look at, you know, when they come in, which is going to be, you know, looking at the schools, looking at your residential areas, looking at your downtown, you know, how do those look when, you know, a client comes? So when we looked at North of Town, what's the industrial area that Dawn says needs cleanup?
Oh, what's off the board?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So just kind of picking up on, you know, okay, if you were going to show this to a client, you know, it needs, it needs to be cleaned up. Let's make sure the weeds are not there and, and things like that. So just comments that kind of help you think about how to present, you know, deals, you know. Dawn, our site selector, and I've worked for him for years, and he's probably worked with over 6,000 business locations, actually helping the company find a location. His, one thing that he looks at when he comes to town to see how the community takes care of its town is the sewer plant. He always goes to the sewer plant to see if, you know, the grounds are taken care of, how is, how it's operating. And that's one of his location factors and how he ranks the community.
Well, we're getting a thumbs up from our Public Works Director.
Are we? Okay, if you got a, yeah, yeah.
We have a beautiful sewer plant, as beautiful as a sewer plant could be.
I remember, I remember being with him when he saw one where they had just put in the solar and it was all cleaned and was landscaped. I mean, he talked about that for months.
We have solar.
That's great.
It's all it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it says a lot about how you take care of your community, yeah, in there.
Thank you.
Well, that's a new one. I've never heard you raid a town by a sewer plant, but.
Well, they also, they also go to your cemeteries, so I just want to warn you.
Okay. No comment. Okay. Mrs. Santos, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Faria?
Oh, just a quick comment. When someone travels from a long way to visit you, what's the first room they go into after they walk in? Your restroom?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a matter of necessity, but.
Well, I think any tourism book will tell you, you always have, you know, restrooms, not, not at the edge of your town. You have restrooms and parking more in the center of your town so you can get them in your downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because if they stop out there, they're not going to stop here.
That's right.
Yeah, they're back in their car.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, council? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, any more comments? Okay. All right, let's go on to item number 12, cancellation of regular city council meeting scheduled for May 2nd, 2018 due to the May Day Fair. And recommendation is to cancel meeting. Do I have a rec, do I have a, a motion? Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve, to, to cancel the May 2nd meeting due to the May Day Fair.
Ms. Faria?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Silveira, second by Faria, to cancel the May 2nd meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to advisement of public notices, item 13, two reports. Director Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So the first item is a vesting tentative tract map at 607 Mercy Springs Road. It's an infill project for 16 units. And the next item is a conditional use permit for 85 West G Street for an automotive repair and smog shop in the general industrial zoning district. These items will be considered by the Planning Commission on Wednesday, April 25th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Item 14, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to the gentleman in going to Boise State. That's a great opportunity. Sacramento is a fine institution of higher learning, and they produce some very talented people. I went there. Anyway. Police Department is once again partnering with 7-Eleven on Operation Chill. 7-Eleven has provided the police department with a limited number of certificates for free Slurpees. So young people out there, be kind to a police officer, say hello, and you might just get a free, or certificate for a free Slurpee, so.
A sugar high.
There you go. And with that, that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. All right, let's go on to city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mr. Faria.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. Good meeting tonight. Says a lot about how Los Banas takes care of the city. Covered a lot of ground about taking care of our citizens. And finally, a couple announcements. First, on April 28th, the Arts Council will be bringing a Tom Petty tribute band to town, the Arts Center. And I forget the name of the band, but it's, it's a Tom Petty tribute, tribute band. If you like Tom Petty's music, then you will want to go see them. Those tribute bands are usually very, very good. Sometimes they're better than the originals. And then next week, April 25th, the Los Banas High School Choirs will do their spring concert. And now the 7:00, 7:30 at the Los Banas High School multipurpose room. Be charging a little admission at $3, and we hope we see you there, and we hope you see you at the fair.
They're called the Refugees.
The Refugees.
Yes, Tom Petty Band. Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I had sent a email forward, and I wanted to also apologize again to Mason for missing the fire, Fire Men's Dinner, so thank you so much, but I do apologize for missing that and my, getting my schedules mixed up and whatnot, so thank you very much. And also, I wanted to mention that in the city of Modesto, there was a, there was a city worker that was alone in the, alone working out in the field and was unfortunately killed, killed working in the field and wasn't found for some time. And I just wanted to, just for our city workers, please be safe out there and just make sure, I mean, I guess there's monitoring for all of our city workers. I just was saddened to hear that story, so thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I, again, congratulations to the gentleman from Boise State. That'd be Mr. Parker Smith from Los Banas High School, Derek Manzaniath from Pacheco High School, and then Adrian Marquez, I'm not sure which high school that he's at. So congratulations to them. Don't want to let folks forget, as we won't be talking to you now until the May Day Fair will be here. It is May 2nd through the 6th, and you can purchase discount fair admissions all this month between now and the 1st of May at 403 F Street. And I'd encourage you to do that. It saves you a couple bucks on the entrance passes, and it saves you like $4 or $5 for the all-important Carnival wristband, which is unlimited rides for a whole day. So if you're looking to do a staycation, it's a way to save a couple bucks. I encourage you to go out there. And that's all I, I did want to say, Street Fair, I was at Street Fair. Thought Chamber did a really nice job with it. It was nice, they had perfect weather, and it was very well-attended. Saw a lot of folks out there, so I give them credit. They did, they did a great job, and even though sometimes as the city, we get blamed for everything, not all things are our fault, just putting that out there. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, that was a good thing. Today, I attended the hospital lunch for the, to honor all the hospital volunteers, and I think it was over 4,700 hours that the, the room was full of, of, of ladies who have volunteered for sometimes 20, 30 years. And the hospital is very appreciative of these individuals who comfort, who care, who, who just basically help run the hospital. And I can't thank you enough for your volunteerism and what you do. And they even have three men there now. It's probably 98% female and about three males. And, and I'm glad to see that the, the retired males are now involved with the, the volunteers for the hospital. So again, thank you so much for the invitation, and congratulations, all of you who, who volunteer at the hospital because it's, it's, it's so needed. Mason, thank you for driving Mrs. Lewis and I to the firefighter's dinner presentation. And we had two honorees, Tim Marison, lifetime firefighter who, and, and chief, who retired recently, and Juan Ramirez. So congratulations to both of you. Tim, retirement's so well-deserved, and Juan, thank you for being part of our department. Last week, I attended this meeting, I think it was, it was last week, for the improvement of the downtown. And, and thank you to the city for providing the facilities, thank you to the Downtown Association for providing the presenter, and a lot of good ideas came out of that. We had one builder in town who pledged a million dollars to the, the beautification of the downtown. So now the downtown residents are, are challenged with coming up with a plan to improve the exterior of the downtown. And that pledge is only good if matching money comes along with it. So if we, if the citizens or the, or the, the building owners and whoever put up money, then that developer will put up an equal amount of money. So you have to find out if that applies to the, the city too, and, and what we can do to get in on that. Well, it's a million more than we had, so. And, and so I, Mr. Hosteller has, in an open meeting, pledged that money and pledged it in the name of his wife, his deceased wife, Kathy Hosteller, a very fine person. And, and so she wanted to see the downtown improvement, so I'm hoping people will take advantage of that and everyone will come up with a plan. The, again, the Arts Council, May 28th, called the Refugees. And the Street Fair, the Street Fair was perfect weather, well-attended, went well. Thank you to the, the garbage company for putting out the, the garbage cans. Thank you to the city for your participation. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for running it and all the vendors who showed up. I usually drive the city cart and deliver breakfast to, to all the vendors, and I know when it's time to stop, when so many people attend, that you have to worry about dodging individuals as you drive the cart. So that's the time to park it and then start walking. And because of that, we walked early because there were so many people that attended. And, and as Mr. Silveira said, you know, we did a good thing, okay? Did a good thing. We want more functions downtown, and part of the, the presentation by the presenter of the Downtown Association said to have a lot of events downtown, let people know there is a downtown and all the other merchants in our, in our community. So this is one way to pull them in with events, and the city's been instrumental in, in trying to help with that. So thank you, city, for your participation and, and how we can continue to, to improve and, and, and basically have more events for our citizens. So with that, anything else, council? Okay, if not, I'm going to adjourn. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be May 16th, 2018.